Our September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five workshop. Uh, first up on our workshop tonight is Lieutenant Chad Davis at the Shute County Sheriff's Office with an update. Nice to see you, Chen.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, so obviously this week we're getting ready for Folk Festival. We'll have several of our City Sisters deputies working over the weekend. Um, we had a meeting with Folk Festival here two or three weeks ago, getting ready for that, coordinating our response to that event. Um, been very busy with cases, uh, obviously with the nice weather that's continued. We continue to be busy with traffic and some crashes and other casework. Um, have seen the, I would say, a small uptick in some of our houseless migrant migratory type. But things that we see, uh, it was really slow at the beginning of the summer. And it seems like just call wise and volume, we've had people passing through that have generated some calls and some arrests here in the last couple of weeks. Uh, folks that aren't, uh, residents of Sisters, uh, folks have come from other parts of the state. We've been, uh, keeping busy with that. And other than that, just everything's going good.
Can I ask a question about that, a follow up to that? Are the people that that get in a little bit of trouble and they get arrested, do they come back to this area? Or, um, is it some of them were migrant and you won't see them again? It'd be kind of nice to know, um, how often what the recidivism rate is, you know, for the people that you're encountering.
Yeah, well, in one, in the case of one gentleman, he was back the next day. He has no connections to Sisters, but for some reason came back. And then sometimes when we arrest people, they stay in Bend or move on from there. So it really depends.
Yeah.
Especially when people don't have a long-term connection to Sisters, no family, no friends. Um, sometimes they, they come back on the bus or, or go back. You know, we offer services, try to get people connected to things, whether it's mental health or one of the shelters in Bend. And but it just really depends.
That's not the statistics that's kept or anything, is it though? I mean, it's not really, there's no data set to point to, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? No, I think we're good. Thank you.
For the great service.
All right, next up Clayton Crowhurst with Northwest Housing Alternatives, gonna give us an update on the Trinity Place project.
Sorry, that was me.
Good to see you again, Clayton.
Hi, y'all. Um, thanks for having me this evening. Um, so I've, I was just joking with one of our funders on this project that I feel like we're in a M. Night Shyamalan movie. There, there's a new twist around every corner with our financing. Um, so as I'm sure city staff have updated y'all, I originally was targeting a summer closing date for this project. Um, hit some interesting economic and bond market conditions, which as well as a prevailing wage issue, um, that made that not work out. Um, I think we've been able though to effectively rework some of the aspects of our bond funding. And actually go after what's called an issuer credit rating for NHA. Um, that is essentially gonna put us in a place where we can offer these bonds for the project publicly. Similar to a school or road construction bond. Um, and that's both helped in terms of huge help on the interest rate side, the amount of funding we can raise for the project. Um, but also just puts us in a place where it offers a little more certainty that that is gonna move forward. Um, it's just a, that point is a publicly traded bond that it goes out on, on the open market for qualified investor to buy. Um, so in terms of timing, uh, the State Housing Agency, it's nice because they're actually the ones setting the deadline for closing on this. And not me being the bully. Um, so they have targeted end of November, um, and said, this is our, what, when we need to close by. Um, and so I think, you know, everybody on the project team is really gathering around that. We've got documents flying, actually got a good update today on just our under call that all of our draft bond documents that we're needing to see are gonna be in people's inboxes by the end of the week. So, you know, I think the steps are really in place to really hit that end of November closing timeline. Um, so that's, I think, the, the good update there. I think the negative part of that is that a November closing means construction completion spring of twenty seven, which puts us past our, right now, the agreement we have with y'all for the ARPA funds to stay in the project. Um, so, you know, and completing the project by the end of twenty six. Um, I think overall, like, spring is a better time to be leasing units, there's more activity. Um, you know, so that's great, but, um, it does mean that, uh, we're, as the agreement's currently written, we're at risk of those funds going away. Um, I think, and, you know, city staff has been great to kind of consider what some options would be, both with our agreement with y'all and then the city agreement with the county to look at changing some terms in there to allow those funds to stay in, be expended, but also NHA provides some guarantees around, hey, we're hitting these milestones on construction or other options. Um, I think it's still critical that the ARPA funds stay in the project along with, um, our five oh one bond funds that we have. Um, I think loss of either of those means that we have to go back into the state funding pool, which our latest waitlist projections there are one to three years. And that's, you know, a guess at best. And I think the real downside of going back into that pool is we're almost certainly gonna have a project that's completely restricted at sixty percent AMI or below. And that's really why I've just, I fought so hard to stick to our current funding plan because it allows us to have some units in the project that are at that eighty percent level, you know, workforce, middle income. You know, really the project that, you know, we worked with y'all to structure it in the beginning. And so, you know, I think the, the timing and the delays are, you know, frustrating for me and I'm sure other folks. Um, but it's also something where, you know, it's, it's taken a lot of work to really retain that original project structure. But where we're at right now, we can still do that, you know, with some tweaks here and there. So, yeah, I think I'll, we'll stop there and fire away with questions.
So what is the current estimated cost?
We're at about nineteen and a half million, um, may go down a little bit from there at closing, so in that range. And I think that was about a twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two percent escalation from kind of our original twenty twenty-two budget. Um, I think we're, the last, you know, kind of little chart I saw of cost escalation, especially construction cost escalation over the last several years has been, you know, for that same timeframe has been in that twenty-five to maybe thirty percent range. So we're beating that by a little bit, but it still is, you know, the big gremlin that has crept out of the cave to grab onto every project out there right now.
So just to make sure it's just in plain language, increase in labor costs, increase in supplies?
Yes. Um, you know, and I would say supplies have been, you know, and materials have just been the biggest one. Um, definitely when we, when we went out to price the project last year, kind of with our first, you know, set of real plans, um, saw a big jump then, but also saw a big jump earlier this year when, you know, kind of the tariff concerns were out there. Um, and a lot of suppliers just increased prices even before those went into effect, kind of just planning on it. So, yeah, that's, that's been a big one. Labor is not cheap in this area, as everybody knows. So that's, that's been a factor we've kind of always known was there. But yeah, the big, bigger swings I feel like have been in materials.
You're optimistic about your bond offerings?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, we've, we've got a really great team in terms of the folks that are kind of arranging this bond sale. And then also the state's bond council, ORIC, is really orchestrating all the documents. And so that's, that's great when the folks that are running the show for documents and managing that transaction are, that's the state's council. So they are, they're really making sure that it's both completed and sold, but then also done correctly and in accordance with kind of all the.
And since these are, in essence, like a municipal bond.
Yeah, it's.
It's much more lucrative for investors to buy these bonds over some other.
Yes, uh-huh. Um, and I think, you know, they're, they're essentially purchasing guaranteed cash flow from the project in the form of interest rate payments on the bonds. So, but yeah, totally, it's a municipal traded bond. Okay, yeah.
Any options with the ARPA funds to get an extension or anything like that?
Yeah, so, you know, and I, I think I'll, Jordan, I'll, I'll probably actually kick that over to you.
Yeah, I mean, the easiest option, Pat Ford, talking to the county will be, uh, us attending, uh, next week's county, you know, commission meeting, uh, to request a revision to the, the grant agreement that we have with, uh, the county. Um, and basically changing the definition of completion, uh, for their purposes, that once the funds are, you know, allocated, then they, they're not beholden to the contract that the project has to be occupied or under certificates of occupancy. Uh, but also means that we'll need to revise our grant agreement with, uh, Northwest Housing, um, to change what that, um, that timing would be for allocating that five hundred thousand. And we've talked about different options on that. Um, and we'll, we'll prepare, once we get the county approval, then we'll come to council on that agreement. Um, and we'll, we'll figure out what the right language needs to be to have some reasonable sort of milestone, uh, when the project's near completion. You know, that, um, or, you know, at some certain level, level of construction, um, that we feel is justified for the five hundred thousand.
That, that would actually be my question. So thank you for answering it. If we were gonna have a milestone or some kind of a bit of a milepost in there related to a percentage of construction.
Yeah.
Completion or something. So we know the funds are actually being expended and moving forward, which.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I wanted, and I want it to be something where it's like, y'all could drive by and be like, oh yeah, the funds got released. And I can see that it is actually at that stage.
We'd all like that.
Yeah, yeah, we had also talked to, like, if, if necessary, you know, if we were really under this ARPA sort of clawback deadline would be, you know, property acquisition and, and other expenses already, you know, that the project has incurred. Um, but it would be nice to see, you know, the project coming out of the ground and, right, you know, under construction and.
For a variety of reasons, right, yeah. And I will just add that in NHA's forty-year history, we've never had a project not complete that we've actually closed on. So, once we're past this end of November closing timeline, not to say construction's easy by any means, but it's, it's not, it's something we've always made sure that we're completing a project once it's closed.
That's why you're here.
I wanted to ask, uh, you know, with the, the kind of total price at the moment around twenty million and, and price per unit, you know, that it does seem kind of high.
Yeah.
And, yeah, can you speak to that? I mean, is, is part of this because of the color of money where, you know, we're having to pay like prevailing wage? And is it, you know, are there kind of things built into the process of using certain, um, funding mechanisms that, um, yeah, we have to pay higher in wages? Or, or yeah, I'm just curious of what's kind of coming into all this because it, you know, it does per unit seem high to me and, and like to learn more about that.
Yeah, and I, I think that we've, you know, all affordable projects are gonna be more expensive. They also are under a series of regulation overlays. I think this project, we've been really careful to structure the income and affordability mix to both, you know, hit as much of kind of the target population we, we need to and also not be under prevailing wage, um, from the Bureau of Labor and Industries. Um, so that is not an issue on this project. Um, I think some of the other, the requirements and stuff that honestly I'm happy to meet is, um, uh, state requirements around sustainability, energy efficiency. Um, and then also internally, we just are gonna build a building that, you know, we've chosen to build an interior corridor building that has hallways as opposed to an exterior walk-up building. Um, we feel that that's one safer and then has lower operating costs in terms of, you know, just having a lot of exposed outdoor wood materials. Um, and so some of that is from just our own choices as an organization is saying, we're gonna own this thing in perpetuity. And we're gonna build it right now as opposed to needing to go back to the well in fifteen years for a big rehab. And then some of that is the financing costs, like, we've got, yeah, a carry and team can tell you how many attorneys are on those calls every week when we're getting into closing. So it's not, you know, a cheap funding source. I think we're offsetting that by going after this issuer credit rating. Um, but it definitely doesn't make for a cheap project. I would say that overall, when you think about the number of families that will actually live there over the life of this property, it ends up being way cheaper than, you know, say, a quick stick-built, single-family home, you know, that sees three to five inhabitants before it needs, or families in there before it needs, you know, a full rehab. I mean, our units can, you know, have, I don't know, over the life of a building, like a sixty, seventy, hundred-year lifespan can be twenty, thirty, forty families in a unit. So when you think about, you know, just the social impact on housing security for that many people over the lifetime of a building, um, that's part of that cost and that, you know, that does not come cheap. But it's something that I think as an organization, we feel strongly about creating a good place to do that.
Do interior corridor buildings, that's curiosity question, in your experience, lead to the folks that are living there getting to know each other a little bit better? Because they have to pass in the hall and they're not going in and out of an entrance that's theirs and theirs alone?
It depends on the population. I think for, I would say, you know, like, working stiffs that are, you know, you're like going out the door and you're racing to your car and then you're coming back and, you know, picking up your kids from school. There's some of that, but I would say especially among folks, um, you know, seniors, um, disabled folks, um, folks that are, you know, staying at home, take care of kids, like all those people that spend more time, there is that more organic interaction that happens. Yeah, and so I, I think it's something those, those people that maybe need it the most also benefit the most from that style of building. And then also, you know, having a laundry room on site and a community room that we're gonna have and outdoor barbecue and that kind of stuff.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Just amazed, to be honest, but we're still gonna get this thing done. So, yeah, I mean, I think that, um, I don't, I shouldn't top for the rest of council, but I'm gonna kind of try anyway. I think we do whatever we need to do to, you know, to still make sure this happens. I mean, this is, uh, something that I've been working on since the beginning. So I'm glad to see, uh, that it's still moving forward and sorry that it's been a little tough on you, but we can't control the economy for sure, so.
That's my job is.
Yeah.
Spinning the Rubik's Cube until the colors line up, so.
So just thanks for working so hard on it. We're looking forward to getting it over the finish line.
Well, I really appreciate the continued support, interest. Um, and I will say that this, this is such a new type of funding for affordable housing. Um, once we're over the line here, um, I think we're gonna have a lot of interest, um, both in the city and how, you know, your role in this and our organization and just how we collaborated to do this project. Um, it's kind of a first of its kind in Oregon for this type of funding and for an organization like ours to get a credit like rating like we're getting. So, yeah, just, just be ready for the knocks on the door once, once that happens.
You should be ready for the knocks on the door. Yeah. We'll, we'll be, we'll be knocking, you know.
Happy, happy to, yeah. Thanks, y'all.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Sisters Recycling Center Conversation, George Wheeler.
I'll start doing the introductions. Uh, Eric and Dan from Republic Services will be coming up. There they are. Um, so they'll join us here at the table. Uh, this is our second workshop, maybe more like second this year. Uh, we had one back in February, uh, to discuss a couple of your council goals over the last couple of years and studying the, the future of our recycling center. Um, and, uh, the first goal was kind of, had to sort of study the different, um, you know, impacts that the Recycling Modernization Act, um, would have, uh, on that future, uh, looking at different possibilities with the recycling center, um, and how that might affect, you know, the, the different services we might provide there, uh, with the additional recyclables that are being added now to, uh, the waste stream. Um, and then, uh, we kind of continued that goal into, to this year, um, to continue studying those options. We still had more information to kind of gather about the impacts of the RMA and reimbursables for haulers and things like that. So those things had, you know, effects on the cost for servicing something like a recycling center, um, and implications as we studied. Like, do we want to have, um, those additional recyclables collected at the recycling center? Or, um, do we proceed with, you know, without? Or, uh, do we continue to seriously consider closing the recycling center? Um, taking into account a lot of these considerations that we sort of outlined in, in this report. Um, Erica and Dan will, will walk through sort of, uh, the different options. I'll, I'll sort of preview those. And we've had discussions about this before, so you're gonna have to listen to me go into a lot of detail about the different options. But the key, you know, policy question in front of council this year is, uh, is do we keep the recycling center open? Um, that's the first sort of big decision point. Um, and why that's in front of you really is about cost, right? This recycling center that we've had for over twenty years is sort of a less leftover legacy for when we needed a place for folks to recycle. Those services are provided for residents at curbside. Um, so, you know, Sisters residents have commingled recycling of their herb, they have garbage, they have yard waste. Um, uh, what the recycling center also provides is a service for unincorporated residents, uh, around Sisters, um, which the county does recognize by giving a subsidy of forty thousand dollars per year. Uh, but as you see in the report, um, that doesn't cover the full cost, uh, to operate and collect the materials and dispose of them, uh, at the recycling center, which, uh, is operating in a, a deficit of about fifty-three thousand dollars last year, uh, for that. And so to continue to provide the service, we would have to cover that cost somehow. Either ratepayers would pay, uh, on their monthly or bimonthly bills, uh, for that recycling center. Um, or the city could cover it with a subsidy like the county. Um, or if we close it, there would be no impact to the ratepayers or the city. So, you know, the nuance here is that factor that a lot of county residents do use it. But if you pass that cost on to ratepayers, it'd be city residents subsidizing county residents. Um, and the county is pivoting towards, you know, focusing on their Northwest Transfer Station, uh, which is, you know, Friar, uh, about ten, you know, minutes away, ten, fifteen minutes from town. Um, they're gonna be directing, you know, county residents to go there for, uh, recycling and, you know, all their, their waste services, um, including adding, you know, the containers for things like the, the plastics and the plastic bags and things that are now going to be captured as part of the Recycling Modernization Act. Still leaves an option for the council to consider whether we expand the recycling center to collect those same materials. And the Circular Action Alliance, who is the, uh, producer responsible organization that was selected by the state to manage this process, would be open to having that conversation still with the city about that option. Um, but again, that comes with a cost and, you know, doesn't, the reimbursement you would get from the RMA, uh, funding wouldn't cover that cost completely. So those costs would still be passed on to either the ratepayers or something the city would have to, to pick up the tab for, um, providing enhanced recycling center. So, big policy question, what do we do about a recycling center that, again, is a pretty unique service? Um, it's a very convenient service. I think, you know, folks do enjoy being able to take cardboard and glass there. Um, they're commingled, but, you know, again, all these kind of factors that play into that of something that the city is subsidizing, something that isn't currently being paid for today, do we want to, um, continue to do that? And then secondarily would be, what, what do we do about glass for our residents who currently do not have curbside glass services, um, like most big cities in Oregon, you know, provide at this point? Um, we, you know, obviously have that option at the recycling center today. Um, but if, uh, the recycling centers close, then that opens that option of, you know, do we want to go to a curbside system, which would be, you know, four dollars a month or, um, uh, for an eighteen gallon bin for folks to recycle at the curb? Um, or we don't have to provide glass recycling. There's a facility close enough to city limits at the Northwest Transfer Station where people can take their materials and their plastics and all the other things to that transfer station. Um, if that would, would be the option, uh, for council to consider too. So, as a long summary of this, again, I know we've studied this before and, you know, we keep bringing it back because, you know, while we're not on an official deadline, um, we just have a, you know, sort of a rolling contract that we do with Republic on every, uh, I think it's down to six months, um, because we have to respect that they are providing the service. Um, and they are, you know, currently, you know, that's just a deficit that's going into their pro formas. And, and when you see those financials, um, and so, you know, that kind of would like to, you know, have a decision this year of what do we do going forward? Whether we include that in the rates, do we close it and kind of communicate to that public? Or do we start talking more seriously about, you know, expanding curbside services for glass? Oh, oh, look, Erica, would you like to?
Thank you, Jordan. That was a lovely summary. Uh, you went into a lot of detail, but, uh, council, thank you for having us tonight. Jordan said we're here to talk about options for you to consider for the Sisters Recycling Center. We provided details on, uh, options to consider, so I'll go through and talk through, um, what we are looking at. And, um, obviously, any questions that you may have, please ask. So to kick us off, um, looking at option number one that we've determined is to keep the current offerings at Sisters Recycling Center. So as a reminder, we currently offer glass, commingled cardboard and motor oil drop-off. Um, right now, that cost like Jordan had mentioned is, is about fifty-five thousand dollars per year that, uh, Republic Services is currently subsidizing. If we were to apply that to, um, the ratepayers, the universal rate that we, that would be applied to all accounts would be two dollars and sixty-six cents.
Excuse me, one moment. Is there, Rebecca, is there a way to get this up on the screen?
Sure.
It was in the packet, just so everybody can see it.
And that was for commercial and residential accounts?
Yes, so it's taking into, into consideration all accounts equally.
Just the one here?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So the next option, uh, for consideration is again to keep the current offerings at the Sisters Recycling Center, but have, uh, the city subsidize. And again, that would be an ask of about sixty thousand dollars annually. If we were to, again, keep the Sisters Recycling Center offers the same, but look at a different race, rate structure, meaning, um, one rate structure applied to commercial customers and one rate structure applied to residential customers, we can look at that option. Uh, we can look at applying a higher rate to commercial, um, customers as, um, they potentially could generate more material, being commercial businesses and a lower rate being applied to residential customers. We have two examples to show you. Um, one rate that we can apply to commercial customers would be ten dollars a month. And one rate can be applied to residential customers at fifty-seven cents. Or we can look at option two, which is applying five dollars to commercial accounts and a dollar thirty to residential accounts. So those are the options that we can look at if we were to keep the current service offerings the same at Sisters Recycling Center. If we were to look at, uh, closing the Sisters Recycling Center and moving to curbside glass for residential customers of the city, that would be a universal rate of four dollars per month. We can also look at, um, offering the same services of the Sisters Recycling Center. So again, glass, commingled cardboard and motor oil, oil drop-off, and then also add residential curbside pickup. This would be at a cost of six dollars and sixty-six, sixty-six cents applied to all accounts. We can look at keeping the Sisters Recycling Center offerings the same plus adding the CAA Pro Depot items. That would be a cost applied to, um, all accounts at a dollar seventy-seven after the, the Pro Depot is cited. And then if we look at keeping the Sisters Recycling Center offerings the same plus adding a Pro Depot and then adding curbside services, this would be at a rate of five dollars and seventy-seven cents once the Pro Depot is cited at Sisters Recycling Center. Or we can look at closing.
But I'm having a hard time following all the numbers in the, what's up there in front of us.
I think she, yeah, I think she jumped around a little bit.
I apologize. It, we don't have, it, it's helpful for me to kind of follow what you've got up there. I'm hearing a lot of numbers and, and, uh, not sure what they're for, to be honest. We got, I hear what you're saying, but, uh, I hear five seventy-seven, I hear one seventy-seven, I hear this and then it's, so, um, I don't know how to solve the problem by just saying that you've lost me a little bit here.
Okay.
I think, um, if I'm understanding correctly, you're offering us different ways to split it out between commercial and residential with, um, with as-is and then with the Pro Depot. I mean, that, that was some of the major pieces, right?
Yeah, the, the intent is to provide different options for council to consider. There's a multitude of options for us to consider with the Sisters Recycling Center. Keeping it open as-is, still currently offering, um, the services that we do provide. Adding the Pro Depot as an option, again, to, to what Jordan said in the beginning, we still need to work with CAA to make that determination on. We still need to work with CAA to make that determination on timeline on what that would look like, but there's that option that exists. We can also consider keeping all of those options open plus adding curbside glass services for residential customers. So it's it's really this details out a combination kind of up all of those things. What the cost considerations would be if you were to select one option. And the final option again would be to close the Sisters Recycling Center. The Pro Depot would be cited at the Northwest County Transfer Station. And there wouldn't be any curbside glass, so that would be at a at a zero cost to any any residents or businesses. So.
It's not clear to me what's cumulative and what's flat. So let let option number five, for example. Keep the SRC with the current offerings.
Yes.
And Pro Depot material as well with a universal rate of a dollar seventy seven per account.
Yes, so that's taking current services. So if you look at option number one, which is the two dollars and sixty six cents. So that's taking.
Where's option number one, fifty dollars?
Very top of two dollars and sixty six.
Okay, I thought I thought you said fifty, my my bad hearing, sorry. Yeah.
So it's taking those current offerings and then considering the Pro Depot subsidy that would be applied to. To those offerings, and that's why you're seeing a reduced rate of a dollar seventy seven. Once that Pro Depot is cited through CAA. So there's a little bit of a subsidy that would help support the overall cost to the recycling center.
So option one would cost the. Client two sixty six a month?
Correct.
Option five, which offers more service, would provide the client that service at a cost of a dollar seventy seven a month? Or is that cumulative with another charge?
No, that is, that's the universal. If you chose option number five, that would be the rate that would be applied.
That's helpful. That that helps me a little bit. You know, I I will say that my biggest concern about anything that where we start talking about the north, the transfer station is the limited hours that it is open. It. Is not real convenient to try to make it work on the, I think, two or three days that it's open.
They're required to expand those. I should have asked that question in the county when I.
Yeah.
Talking about.
With signing of the Pro Depot, they are required to expand hours to include a weekend day. So that would be something that would change once the Pro Depot is cited at Northwest Transfer Station or I would should say. When and if it's cited at Northwest Transfer Station.
My my biggest concern is given the tendency of many folks to view recycling as something they do if it's not a pain. And something that they don't do if it is a pain. Is that if we aren't careful, we may actually end up having the reverse effect of what we wish to do, which is diverting more material to the waste stream. Or finding more of it at the side of the road or more of it just dumped somewhere. So that's that's just something that's in the back of my mind as we move forward with this. And one of the things I would want to know too, if we decided to close the SRC. And go in that direction is some of the services that are provided that are seasonal, like the Christmas tree collection, for instance. Which helps a lot with stuff being tossed in the woods around here, fire hazards and things like that. Would those continue? Would they not continue? So those are those are questions that I would want to have an answer to before I make a decision about closing that particular location.
And that's a good question to consider. You know, we do offer to. Which the timing may not align with Christmas specifically, but we do offer cleanups for the city.
That's definitely work.
Right.
Talking, we're talking, I I go over there in January. And there's a dumpster and it's full to the top with trees. And I go back through three days later, there's another one that's full to the top trees. So a lot of people are utilizing that and that's and. Having lived in a in a community with a lot of trees that didn't do that, you tend to find them in the forest. Somebody dumps them off the back of their bumper in the forest. Well, it's a tree, they're going to the forest and, you know, as we know, that increases. The risk, I think, of some of the climability issues that we're concerned about and those sorts of things. So.
I think those those type of programs are negotiable.
I mean, I think that's. But I'm just saying that. Be something that I would want to see and and I do have cardboard concerns as well, but. You know, I do cut it up and put it in the bin, but the bill only takes so much.
Yeah, I mean.
Good, you're fine.
I mean, I think to Jordan's point, those are those are items that if council is concerned of, we can we can talk through different options and solutions that can be presented. For consideration.
Yeah, I mean, I hear your concerns about, you know, we don't want more recyclables in the waste stream, right? I think the factor is that, again, that we're we're trying to weigh is how many how much of the recycling center is being used by residents outside city limits, which, you know. I guess this is probably okay to talk publicly because I think they're moving in this direction. I've had meetings about it, but doing co-mingled recycling service around incorporated. Counties moving in that direction, which would reduce the volume at the recycling center. And get more recyclables out of the waste stream because now county residents can do that at the curbside. I think for us, it's glass would be the big issue.
And I recognize using that facility frequently. That a lot of people do utilize it for garbage disposal, which is an issue and I and I suspect some of those are not city residents.
Even with the garbage can there.
Yeah, and so I I know that's a problem for you folks. Don't get me wrong.
It is, and and, you know, we've kept the trash container there just because we've recognized that is an.
I appreciate it.
We're we're trying to support, but I think that's also something to take into consideration if we are looking for ways to potentially reduce costs. While keeping the Sisters Recycling Center open. That can be something that is removed, but obviously there's risk to consider with that as well.
I guess where I am at on this is I want to make it as convenient as possible for residents of the city of Sisters. To recycle under the auspices of the new plant. And while. The transfer station for our year may not be a long way away. We have people who may not have a vehicle, don't have a vehicle that they really are comfortable going there with. And so I think that it. I'm very uncomfortable with reducing service while, in essence, we're trying to increase service. Not getting you guys hurt, Tom, I'm just kind of letting the others know where my brain is on this as we move forward because. I I like what we do in this town and I hate to see it go backwards.
So. Thanks, Gary.
Yeah.
I am inclined to. I would I would like to long term see this close, the recycling center close. I'd like to get out of the business of being a recycling. Manager. You know, I asked questions the other day. I just want to make sure I understood. Other cities generally don't do this. This is kind of a leftover from how things worked prior. Understanding that the county is working toward having curbside recycling. Makes me feel a lot better about that idea. I opened negotiations. I mean, I mean, I'm hearing some things that are concerns. I think we should put, try to get those all on the table and figure out, okay, what are the things we need to work through? You know, I'm I'm not sure what we do the land afterwards, but it's an asset and I. Something tells me something's going to come up that we can do with that. And if not, you know, there's always the option to sell it and do something else with that money. As far as glass goes, I think in my mind, that's kind of a separate project. Like we can deal with that separately. Probably need to do some outreach to the city residents, find out are they interested in having glass at. Curbside and are they interested in paying for it? Yeah. That's right.
Yeah, that was my question is, have we asked the citizens what? Of the city of Sisters what they want? I mean, that's kind of where we. You know, this is a place where we could do a really easy poll. You have the billing addresses for everybody in the city. In fact, you have the billing addresses for everybody in the in. The whole greater Sisters area. I think we should do some outreach for sure before we make any final decisions. Although, I would say that I agree with you for the most part. I've always thought that the recycle center is an underutilized city property when it comes to dollars. You know, dollars per acre these days is a big thing and for, you know, is it noble what we're doing? Absolutely. Is it effective? Somewhat, but I think it's still utilized by at least fifty percent by county residents as a city. And I think we can find a solution for this and make this a win-win situation where the city gets. To figure out something else to do with the property long term and also find a better way. To maybe get glass curbside and then. We can work with the county on what they want to do too. And if they if they're ready to do curbside in the next few years, that's really a game changer because. Then the recycle center becomes absolutely unnecessary, almost, almost. So that's that's where I'm at.
But can you explain the Pro subsidy a little bit? Because. Right now, the the plan is the Northwest Transfer Station would have the the Pro facility. You know, some of the adoptions had that being also in addition to located maybe at our facility. You know, obviously, I think it could also be located somewhere else if there was another, you know, property owner that that wanted to host it and. So I guess I have two questions. One is, what is the estimated size needed of a space for all those bins for for certain items? And and then the second thing being. You know, I know there's a subsidy attached to it, but is is there an issue of, oh, okay, if it's. If it's a Friar, then you don't get subsidy or or, you know, or is there? A limit to how much the subsidy can be used in the community?
Great questions. So the first comment I'll say relating to that is. CAA is still making the determination on where they are going to be placing their Pro Depots. The considerations on the table for this particular area is. Sisters Recycling Center and Northwest Transfer Station. It's based off of, they're making those determinations based off of where the centroid of the population is located in the area, convenience. So they're still, I think, in the in the phase of analyzing where's the most appropriate location. To place their Pro Depot. They've felt that the Sisters Recycling Center is a great option, given the proximity to the residents in this area. But obviously, that would be a consideration for council also to think through as would would you all want a Pro Depot cited here? As far as the size size that would be needed. It's roughly the size of, I would say, a thirty yard dumpster container. So putting that in retrospect, if you. Look at the Sisters Recycling Center and see all those big dumpsters that we have there, it's approximately the size of one of those containers. So they have that size container and they have small containers within that. Where customers utilizing the facility would need to source separate the specific material into the appropriate bins. There's also a ramp that would help support anyone needing to use a ramp to get into the container. So it's. A decent size. We thought when we when we did the initial site survey that. Kind of the back end of the facility would be a an okay location. There's obviously quite a tight turn that would need to be taken for a larger truck to come in and service those containers. So. Space is somewhat of a constraint, but, you know, we may need to do a little bit of reworking if we keep all of the current offerings plus add the pro material items as well.
So one of your options is a Pro Depot only, so to remove. The other sorts of things that are currently recyclable within the community of Sisters.
Yeah, that could be an option. I think, you know, also a comment relating to the Pro Depot, the county has been supportive if. Council wants to consider the Pro Depot at Sisters Recycling Center, the county has been supportive of that as well.
Uh, Jordan. This is, sorry, this just came to my head and I thought I'd ask since we're still here. Is there any possibility that the? It feels like this is a county service, you know, in general. That, you know, the county would want to take this over. I mean, at this site.
Yeah, we've asked them that a few times. I think it because they have the the Northwest Transfer Station nearby. Which has a lot of services there and they're expanding that. I get the impression that they're going to add the Pro Depot material collection there regardless of what we do. I think either on their own dime or through the reimbursement. Why we've asked for additional contributions and there's been reluctance there. There might be some movement, but nothing to cut into that sixty thousand dollar a year subsidy. And plus with them going to the co-mingle curbside probably in the next year or two. It gives them even less of a reason to support or buying this facility. That being said, you know, this facility does close, there's probably going to be a lot of county residents that are going to have questions that will need to go to the county and have those questions answered. So that's one way that maybe there's a little pressure that would be put on the county for moving faster on something or, you know. Looking at other options, but I get the the sense from them that they got their hands full with the landfill and expanding their current transfer stations.
And I'm just. I'm very uncomfortable ending up having city residents paying for. Services that are. Being used by.
Non city residents.
Non city residents, really, you know, ongoing. I think that. It's not just the the cost, the dollars that we're talking about, which, I mean, I understand it's real dollars that get spent. But it's also, you know, staff time that it takes to do the calls and understanding. I mean, I think sometimes on. These projects. What doesn't get seen is how much time is spent. Behind the scenes. And so it's not just the dollars that we see, you know, fifty five thousand or sixty thousand dollars or two seventy seven to. Certain things. It takes away staff time that could be used on other projects as well. And so. We attended a lunch last week that was talking about fiscal responsibility and. Yeah, I just really concerned long term about it.
Just one quick question on the curbside glass, because that's something that, you know, we could look to do fairly soon if we wished, but looks at. Trying to say this delicately. You guys haven't been real good about getting out schedules this year. I think we got one for another community in our mailbox, one Redmond, or maybe it was Primeville. I can't remember. So if we're gonna do it one day a week.
Or one day a month?
One day a month. How how are we going to communicate that out to residential customers so they know? I mean. I'm old. I sometimes have to look to see if I'm supposed to put out yard debris or recycling on any given day and. Since I don't have a paper calendar anymore, I have to go to the website. Not everybody is website comfortable, especially some of our older citizens. So getting that information can be tricky.
Right.
So if we do something like this, what efforts will you guys be making in your end? To ensure that every customer you have has something in front of them that they can stick on the refrigerator or. An easy place to find an answer that doesn't require going to the website, having to drill down with your street address, just to find out what they collect, what is being collected that particular week?
Yeah, I think, you know, thinking about a change like that, we would probably communicate in multiple ways. You know, we would update our our website. So if customers feel comfortable going to our website, we would make that change. We would make the update to the calendars and have that on the website. We also would probably do an an email and mail. Communication to our customers, announcing the change and when the change would come, we would be providing the updated calendars. We do that because some of our customers have indicated they prefer email. Some of them indicate they prefer mail, so that's generally how we approach any changes that are made. And we would probably also do invoice notifications prior to the change going into effect. So. That's how I would anticipate or how I would move forward with any change so that there's.
Just thinking that one through, I think that we need to understand that we do as citizens that are not comfortable navigating your website to to find what they need to find and. Given the bimonthly fee collection that didn't get communicated real well, that makes me nervous. I know you guys can do better. I know you want to do better, so.
I have a question about the glass recycling. It's four dollars a month. Is that for one bin? And if you needed two bins, I have some friends that use a lot of glass because they drink a little. And is it two bins for eight bucks and three bins for twelve? How's that work?
Uh, we have priced it with one bin in consideration, but we can have that as a takeaway to look if there's multiple bins upon request.
I've seen other communities where one bin a week is full, so. I I I'm worried about some.
I am too.
Having had it. Community having glass falling out of bins and breaking in the road and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So, but, okay, thank you.
And on that note, with the four dollars, that's whether or not the resident uses.
It would be a universal.
Glass, right?
Correct.
Regardless of whether they recycle or not, the glass, okay. On on the. Pro Depot, how much time would that take to put into effect if we wanted to add that?
That actually would be, that timeline would be through CAA, so that's further discussions. They're just starting that process of. Determining prolocations. They're just starting that process of determining pro locations. So I anticipate it could potentially take up to two years before any of the pro depots are sighted within this area. Now, that's just an estimate from me. It could be a shorter process. But right now, since we're in the early phases of the CAA program, RMA program being rolled out, and there's multiple different elements to this particular program, you know, the pro depot just being one of those elements. So it's quite complex in nature. So that's why I anticipate, being on the conservative side, I would anticipate at least that. But again, there's further follow up and discussions that we would need to engage with CAA to really understand the true timeline.
Having met with them just last week, you know, they are working on rolling out in other parts of the state and kind of ironing out all the hiccups and things like that. So lessons learned already on on how the implementation is going. You know, they're in the process, though, of working on the sites for Central Oregon. And so there is sort of this, you know, we don't have a lot of time to sort of like, well, should we? Because the longer we wait, you know, the county is ready to go and say, yes, bring it here to the Northwest Transfer Station. And so that would forego kind of our opportunity to cite it here, at least in the short term. And then there may be additional sightings as the rollout continues and the program gets more steam into the future. So that's at that two-plus-year timeline. So there is a window of opportunity where we can get in the first, you know, sort of, you know, sightings for Central Oregon, but that window's closing pretty fast.
Okay. And and that, assuming we could do it today, if I'm understanding this correctly, that $1.77 rate would allow us to have the additional recycling, the pro recycling, and also cover the deficit that we've been talking about, the $53,000? It covers that as well?
Yes.
Now, do we feel that the county is going to continue to give us $40,000 subsidy? Or do you feel like as they maybe do more of the Northwest Transfer Station, that they might pull that funding out?
Well, they they subsidize Republic. So that's between Republic and the county. So I, it's not something you can just bank on forever, you know. Things can change and they're in a budget situation, you know.
Potentially, you're right. And we've had conversations with them regarding the Sisters Recycling Center, and they've indicated right now that they're, they're going to continue with that $40,000 subsidy. So right now, I'm confident in the fact that that will continue. But to Jordan's point, I don't know, that could always change.
When was the last time it it was changed, the rate?
Oh, gosh.
The $40,000?
The $40,000 has been the $40,000 for years and years. I don't, that dates me.
Regardless of population growth now in the county.
A long time. And that's prior to Republic Services coming into the market.
I've not seen a different number in the short time.
I don't think it's changed since I've been on council. I think it's always been 40,000, and that's seven years.
But back to your question, which I think is a good one, is at option five, I keep coming back to that, I guess, at 1.77. So would there be a $60,000 hit to us still? Or is that covered right there?
No, that that covers what we have today, plus adding a pro depot. And it would cost a rate pair of 1.77 a month.
And and so I guess the question I have, and that is, it'd be a little more if you had a curbside glass, I get that. Or I guess it'd be glass out there at the site. The question I have is, does it make sense to do that for a year or two while we let the rest of this shake out? I'm with you, by the way. Why don't you know, I'm right there that I'm not real interested in subsidizing waste disposal for residents, people that are not residents within the city limits. That's not what we're here to do. And, you know, we have enough pressure on our systems as it is without trying to subsidize what should be paid for by county residents all in the county.
Yeah, just say on that option, you know, I don't think the CAA will be interested in citing a pro depot if it's just a temporary thing, you know, they they want to make sure that's for the long haul and they can communicate that and market that and everything. So if you if you just want to keep status quo, it's the $2.66 recycling center, I would say.
Dump, one more dumb question, I'll let it go. And that is, since this is essentially, as you say, a 30-yard, whatever it is, container that handles all the pro materials. Is there, and given your comment about the value of the property, is there somewhere within, somewhere closer than Friere, I guess I'm going to put it that way, where that particular individual thing could be cited on a rental piece of land or something like that, a small piece or in a store parking lot or something? I'm just saying where where that service could be provided and the rest of it goes away.
There are certain.
So we get the property back.
I mean, there's certain criteria that would need to be in place for CAA to cite a pro depot, one of those being there has to be, it has to be monitored certain, within certain hours to ensure that there isn't contamination of any of the material. So I think the facility, they're looking for facilities that can be closed during during certain periods of time and that they can ensure that there is at least a full-time employer or they're paying for a quarter of a full-time employee to support managing the materials. So kind of, there's just certain criteria that would need to be in place. I don't think they would be receptive to just having the container in an open area.
If if the county is going to pursue this pro depot anyway, I have really no interest of trying to jam it into Sisters as well.
Just just asking.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I think that if they're going to pursue it anyway, I don't know, I don't.
And I think I hear you say very clearly that if we had a pro depot, here we'd have to have a city employer, some other employee at the site.
Yes, that's correct.
I was wondering how they're going to handle that. Okay, that's just all good information to have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, I can think of a couple of locations in town, businesses or nonprofits that do, that have kind of regular staffing hours and they do recycling services, different different types. So I, you know, that's something to explore a little bit more if one of those entities would want to take that over, if there was money from, you know, the pro to subsidize that and it was a benefit to them. That's, that's the only other thing I can think of is to is to kind of get it again off of our.
All dang.
Out of our property. But it definitely sounds like there's a lot of moving parts. And they're all at different times. And it's, it's a little, it's a little hard. But I think we've, I think one takeaway, I think, I feel like we would all like to get a better sense from the community about some of these options, you know, people want curbside glass or, you know, their their attachment to the recycling facility or if it's something that, you know, was a really great addition to the community 20 years ago, but but has has lived its life. So.
My garage would appreciate getting back all the glass recycling boxes that I can fast and make a trip to throw it all in.
Yeah, I have a stack of that as well. So.
I'd like to hear from the public. One, glass recycling, or do you want it at the curb?
Yep.
And two, recycling center, get your name, kind of, just to see what people say. And I think we can base a lot of stuff off.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
Is this?
But I don't know how we, I don't know how we do that.
So the last question's easier. I think, you know, for having clear communications because of the subsidy issue and the other, you know. And, you know, and we'll have to ask, you know, are you a city resident versus not to try to parse through that. But it, because it's not just a clean, like, do you want the recycling center, it's going to cost you this amount, you know, do you want the, you know, curbside glass is going to cost you? We would have to explain some of these, you know, sort of nuances with this decision. But I think we could run something, do some survey and talk to businesses, because that's the other element we haven't really talked about, that we we suspect that cardboard, especially, is being used by business and also glass. But they have the opportunity for cardboard at a pretty reasonable cost in town. So that's another piece of communication that can go out. I think we can, right? It won't be a scientific survey. I'll be pulling and get sort of a temperature. And I would include costs. So people understand, either option is going to cost you, you know, something. Do you want the convenience of glass at your curb? Or do you want to continue taking it to the recycling center?
Well, option one is do nothing and it's a cost of 2.66. So there you go.
Right, right.
If we do nothing, it costs $2.66 more.
And is this something that that we should do as a city or is this something that?
I think we could, I think we probably want to run this, the polling and get the temperature of our citizens, but they can, you know, hopefully push out some information of like, you know, the link and things like that, like, hey, you know, here's your bill. By the way, you know, city's interested in the future of your recycling and curbside services, take the survey. We'll have to do that pretty soon. I know we'd like to get this, you know, sort of the next few months, kind of come to a decision. And we can continue to put this on the agenda too, as check-ins if we need to, if you if you feel, you know, comfortable in the next, you know, month or so narrowing down options. But if you do want to ask about, do people want the recycling center, then we'll probably have to take a couple of months to gather that comeback.
And I think how confident with your conversations with the county are you? I know it's a little bit in the beginning of the the county residents around us getting, you know, recycling services finally at the curb as well. Like, because that's, that's a, I think, a really big.
When's our next joint meeting with them?
Coming up, I think.
That would be a great agenda item and just kind of hash this out a little bit.
Yeah, we could do that in the interim. I think it's serious enough that they they've run the numbers and started to do the analysis on what it would cost and what, you know, for for the bills and things like that. So, yeah. It's moving. Okay.
Anything else? Or did you get enough?
I think so. I think we're going to do a little outreach campaign here and try to do it as fast as we can.
Sorry, staff, that we're doing a poll.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for coming out. Appreciate it. That ends our workshop. We're going to start the regular meeting. You guys want 6:40, 6:45, about a break?
40.
All right, 6:40. Order. November 24 is 2025 regular meeting of the Sisters City Council. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's an option.
All right, Michael. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Letts.
Here.
Council President McNugall.
Here.
Counselor Preeden.
Present and accounted for.
Counselor Ross.
Present.
Counselor Pellerin.
Here. All right, thank you. Do I have an approval of the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, visitor communication. Again, we will be having a public hearing in a little bit here on the UGB application. So if you have comments about that, please wait till then. Otherwise, if there's any other visitor communication on any other topic, this is the time for that if you have signed up.
Michael.
Okay, he passes.
All the others in my hand are for the UGB item.
Okay, is there anyone?
You're on Zoom and would like to make a visitor comment on anything other than the UGB item, please raise your hand. I see none.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have an approval of the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to council business. So public hearing, Resolution 2025-14, direction to prepare a UGB application. Community Development Director Scott Woodford is going to walk us through this process. Do you do the?
Going to open the public hearing?
Do I need to open the public hearing now? Okay, I'm going to open this public, what's that? Oh, okay. Okay, I'm going to open this public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. For the record and for the audience, I'm Scott Woodford, Community Development Director for the city. We also have on the call with us up on Zoom our consultants from MIG that have been involved with this process from the beginning, Matt Hasty, as well as Andrew Parish. They're available for questions tonight. As, as the mayor had mentioned, this is a resolution to request authorization or for an order of the city council to authorize the community development director to submit a comprehensive plan amendment to adopt the UGB utilizing the steering committee, the UGB steering committee that we put together, their recommended boundary map is the request before you tonight. So this is a little background. If you could bring it. If you have access to our, give access to our slides there.
Scott, can you just clarify something? I, you said comprehensive plan and I think, did you mean to say land use application or?
Well, it is a land use application in general.
Okay.
Specifically, it's a, it's an amendment to the Sisters Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, and using those terms interchangeably there. Sorry. I'll just go ahead and get going. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background. We usually, we usually touch on the project timeline to bring the council and everybody up to speed in terms of where we are in this process. We're about 18 months into this process that we started back in, if you go to the second slide. That we started back in March of 2024 with the project kickoff. As part of that project kickoff, we, the city, the council established the UGB steering committee that we convened to help advise the council on this process. The second step in that process was to take a look at the land need that we had projected earlier and to finalize that, to make sure we knew how many acres we were going to be pursuing. And so we did that and we finalized that. And the number was around 250 acres. And if you recall, a portion of that is residential, a portion employment lands and then parks and at a school spot, a school location, elementary school location. After, after doing that, we went into the next phase, which was establish and analyze the study area. And that's the, where we drew the map, the half-mile radius around the community, around the existing boundaries. And then we classified the different lands within that boundary as priority one through four. Priority one lands were the highest priority lands to be considered. And we also identified priority two and priority four lands. Through that process, we were able to identify approximately 2,000 acres of priority one lands that was more than sufficient to accommodate the 250 acres that we identified as our need. We also, after doing so, we created and evaluated alternatives. If you recall, we took that priority one area and we established five different alternatives that we took out to the community for comment. And we also did extensive analysis on to, to see what, how suitable those lands were against the goal 14 criteria. It was also reviewed through our outreach efforts, specifically our community open house that we did, that we got feedback from the community on those five different alternatives. We took that and over time, working with the steering committee, the planning commission of the council, we were able to refine those five concepts down to a concept A and a concept B. Concept A being without the Mackenzie Meadows Village Properties. Concept B, some of the lands over here, as well as the Mackenzie Meadows Village Parcels. And that was a direction from council to to keep, even though the Mackenzie Meadows Village Properties are considered priority four, or were considered priority four at the time, council directed to keep, keep that on the line, so to speak, while they worked through that process, to keep it in consideration. At, at our meetings in the, in the late, early summer, the, the steering committee made a recommendation to go forward with a concept, a refinement of concept A that became known as concept, capital A, little a, to go forward with that. The planning commission also eventually weighed in on that to go forward with these UGB steering committee recommended boundary. And now, and reiterate, actually twice, the steering committee that they wanted, that they preferred, concept A. So here, we're here tonight to get council direction on, on the map, what the council would like of. So here, we're here tonight to get council direction on on the map, what the council would like us to do as a staff to to consider adopting as is or or breaking potentially some refinements to that. And and so go to the next slide, please. Just a few more slides before I'm gonna turn it over to I'm sorry, where were you? Back up a little bit. Keep going. Okay, yeah, this is just a slide that shows the summarizes the actions of the of the steering committee and the work that was done this summer, kind of a reiteration of some of the things I just mentioned, continuing to monitor, continue to monitor the Mackenzie Meadows re-village rezoning process. We started to perform some initial framework for our area planning to things that we could do to get ahead of that process a little bit without getting too far. I mentioned the this UGB steering committee making their recommendation in July. And then continued check-ins with our Public Works Department, our engineering or city engineer, as well as checking with ODOT just to make sure they were up to speed on on the direction that the community was moving in relative to expansion to get their feedback. And then, as I mentioned, the August work session, I was a an endorsement, I guess, of the steering committee recommendation. Go forward.
Excuse me, Scott, can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. And then continuing with the the, as mentioned, August twenty-first meeting where we discussed the 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 preferred alternative boundary. Also gave them updates on on the rest of the pertinent items. And then, as we mentioned, continuing to keep an update on on up to speed on as council directed on on what the status of the rezone for Mackenzie Meadows Village was at the is and was at the county. They're moving closer to a final decision on that. Looks like that will occur October first. And it's possible that they will adopt an emergency ordinance, so that will go into effect sooner than the ninety days, I think, that they typically take. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to to Andrew, I believe, and he's just gonna kind of review again and dive in a little bit more detail about what the need, the land need is, and then talk a little bit more about the concepts that were being considered by the steering committee and the planning commission. So, Andrew.
All right. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. So I'm not sure if you're seeing my slides or if you're seeing slides controlled by somebody in the room, but I'm on a slide that says land need.
It's it's the correct slide.
Okay, so I'm just gonna describe briefly some of the fundamentals about the urban growth boundary amendment that is being proposed and kind of some of the alternatives that were discussed and the the final kind of A dot A item that was proposed by the steering committee and forwarded by the planning commission. So in in general, we're talking about about one hundred and seventy acres of residential land that is needed to accommodate growth in the city of Sisters. That's about one thousand one hundred and seventy-five units of housing. There's also a need for fifty acres of employment land. Seventy percent of that is commercial land and thirty percent of that is industrial land. We've identified a need for about nineteen acres of parks, open space and trails and a fifteen acre school site per the school district. So we're we're talking about two hundred and fifty-five gross acres of developable land. And depending on what is in those kind of tax slots that are 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 part of that, that is about two hundred acres of net developable land. So on the next slide, we have the concept A that we discussed with city council, I believe, last time we were here. These, so concept A and all of the refinements that were discussed as part of the steering committee were using land that rank very highly on goal fourteen factors, which was the main kind of part, main topic that was discussed by the community when we were there in December, having that open house. So we prepared three initial refinements that emphasized different ideas, so including more of Indian Ford Creek and the Meadow for the purpose of having open space and trails. That was A one, A two had a greater amount of land near the Sisters Eagle Airport. Thinking about commercial and industrial uses and A three included more land along Highway one twenty-six. Again, thinking about commercial and industrial uses there. So the following slide has a map of our original concept A and then these A one, A two, A three that were discussed. Concept A dot A was one that was created kind of in the meeting with the steering committee. And it includes land adjacent to the airport, which is north of Barclay Meadows Drive. And it also includes land at the confluence of Whitechus and Indian Ford Creeks. It was kind of getting at some of the best aspects of finding commercial space near the airport and also near the highway. There were a couple of other kind of items that were discussed during the meeting. But really, if we get to the slide with kind of the the nicer map with the orange expansion area, this was the steering committee preferred concepts. So we have about three hundred and fourteen gross acres in large part because that includes land that has some of this meadow area that we don't assume to be developable, but is useful to bring in for a variety of reasons and also has a number of existing homes on some of these lots. So so the gross acres is larger than the the net acres that we assume to actually be developable land for urban uses in the city in the future. It includes land along Highway one twenty-six. It includes land north of Barclay near the airport. And and again, it has land kind of at that creek confluence that might be useful for open space, trails, parks, that kind of thing. Part of the rationale as articulated by the steering committee was that this alternative avoids potentially lengthy delays associated with any appeals for the Mackenzie Meadows Village site. It has opportunities for commercial and industrial development. It has potential for a future north-south collector road to Highway one twenty-six. It includes portions of those creek corridors for future open space and trail networks. And it has properties, it includes properties that score very highly in those evaluation criteria that were required to use by the state. So I'll I'll stop here and leave it to Scott for for the discussion.
I think that concludes our staff presentation, so.
You just cut right to the chase.
Yeah.
This is your communication.
Yeah, communication starts.
How does it communicate?
Yep. I did. Can you just clarify one thing for the audience and everybody that just, this is like just reminding everybody that this is a kind of a line drawn on a map. It doesn't mean that everything is suddenly in the city. There's an annexation process that follows this as well, just just to clarify that, because it's always been a confusing
Sure.
topic for a lot of people.
Yeah. So if if a property is included into the urban growth boundary, it it remains in the county until such time it is, a property owner petitions for annexation into the city. So doesn't mean, yeah, like if just because you're in the urban growth boundary does not mean you're automatically in the city. It just means that it gives you the opportunity to petition the city for annexation. But it still has to meet certain requirements such as being contiguous to the existing city boundary, so it's an orderly outward expansion of the of the boundary.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we can move on to public comments now.
Tom Dorst.
I just wanted to thank the Urban Growth Boundary Steering Committee for all the time and effort that they put into developing this recommendation. According to me, the recommendation allows for better emergency evacuation egress. For example, it avoids evacuation congestion through the downtown corridor. And from what I could see, it provides for a future north-south connector road to Highway one twenty-six. It includes opportunities for commercial and industrial development. It provides closer access to downtown, which I believe was a for the council. It recognizes that the majority of citizens do not want to see MMV land developed for multiple reasons, such as fire egress, rare plants, wildlife protection. And finally, sources say that the MMV rezoning appeal process will be very lengthy, so hopefully you guys go with what the steering committee recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Peter Hoover.
And I apologize, I forgot to explain that. Say your name and where you live. And 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 try to keep it around three minutes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I'll try and do it in under two. How about that? All right. Peter Hoover, Executive Director, Sisters Habitat for Humanity, two-two-one South Ash Street here in Sisters. Like the previous speaker, my thanks and respect to city staff and the community members who have dedicated countless hours over the years to bring the UGB expansion process to this point in time. Now let's capitalize on the work that they've done to ensure the best outcome for our community. Once every twenty years, the city has a chance through the UGB expansion process to shape who gets to live here. This decision will determine whether Sisters becomes a wealthy enclave or if it's a community where the workers vital to our businesses, our schools, our health, our well-being, our Sisters High graduates who want to stay and our retirees can continue to live and be part of the fabric that is what makes up Sisters and makes it so great. Local employers, including the Sisters School District, have testified to the challenge of filling positions because applicants simply can't afford to live here. Retaining teachers and employees is equally difficult, given the cost of housing. Sisters Habitat, the largest creator of affordable homes, is out of land in twenty twenty-seven and priced out of the currently available land. Without intentional collaboration and clear requirements, our housing disparity in Sisters will only continue to grow. The Department of Land Conservation and Development has recognized that the historic implementation of Goal Ten has often reduced housing policy to a theoretical accounting exercise, failing to ensure homes can be built, are actually built, or that households can realistically access them. Look to neighboring cities here in Central Oregon to see that theoretical capacity alone does not deliver housing when infrastructure and financial realities are not considered. Choose inclusivity. I ask you to please choose inclusivity by advancing the expansion options that will actually result in affordable homes, homes that are within the means of working families, graduates and retirees in our city. Waiting another twenty years for a theoretical capacity to translate to actual affordable homes is simply too long a time period. Please give due consideration to all the up, all the options that are before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Russell.
Kathy Russell, one zero zero six West Collier Glacier Drive. And I have two things that to talk about tonight. And the one is I attended all the, all but two of the UGB steering committee meetings. And those that I didn't attend, I read the me, I read the minutes or watched the video and they were very professional. They didn't take the task lightly and they put a lot of thought into it. And so tonight I was going to talk about supporting their decision and that that to honor the work that they've done, that I felt council should approve their recommendation. And then I read the letter from Chris Kobach and also did some other reading. And I think that maybe council should consider sending the proposal, the recommendation back to the the UGB committee and asking them if, if MMV would have been a priority let one land, would your recommendation still be the same? And then to me, that would give you a clear direction on where you might want to go on that one. And then the second one, and the one that I think is even more important than whatever you decide, is that the concept the concept area planning stage, the next stage after you identify your land, is the most critical. And I think that a process similar to the UGB committee should be in place where everything is looked at very carefully and thoroughly and the process is not rushed. And there needs to be active community participation in this decision and the zoning of this property. And I don't think that a promise of affordable housing should rush or push through decisions that are so important to Sisters' future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kristen Riedelberger.
Hello, Mayor Letts and city councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the Sisters' UGB expansion process. My name is Kristen Riedelberger and I'm the Associate Program Manager for the Cities and Towns Program at Central Oregon Land Watch. And I served as an ex officio member of the UGB steering committee. Central Oregon Land Watch urges the city council to support a right-sized AA UGB expansion that closely aligns with the steering committee and planning commission's recommendation. This recommendation is the result of thorough discussion and consideration of all potential options, data analysis and community input. The proposed expansion area also reflects what the Sisters community has supported over a year-long public engagement process and a well-attended open house. Land Watch does not support bringing in the Mackenzie Meadows property and the UGB expansion. Bringing Mackenzie Meadows property into the UGB would mean cutting into valuable forest and wildlife habitat while delaying the process and the housing that Sisters needs. Sisters will benefit far more by sticking with a holistic and sustainable approach to growth. We plan to appeal the county's decision to Luba as we strongly believe the application does not qualify for an exception to statewide land use planning goal four. Lastly, there is no demonstrated need for the Mackenzie Meadows property to be included in the UGB. The city of Sisters needs affordable housing and this need can be met within the recommended boundary as it has been done and it will continue to be done. For example, there is already a prospective developer that has shared their intent to produce affordable and workforce housing and a complete community within the AA boundary. The city can also continue to employ more tools and strategies to support the development of affordable housing in Sisters. Thank you for your service and your consideration of these comments. We look forward to continuing to work with the Sisters community to help deliver a more equitable and sustainable future.
Thank you.
Kurt Kalberg.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Kalberg, Wolf Office Box thirty-five hundred, Sisters, Oregon. You've heard from me before. I spent the last few days last week going to the county commissioners final discussion. You are not allowed to talk. You just have to listen to them discuss the proposal of changing the zone on Mackenzie Meadow. It was a unanimous decision. Phil Chang, even after the decision of it being the zone changed so it could be included in the urban growth boundary, even suggested, well, let's speed this thing up. Let's do the first and second reading together. And let's eliminate ninety days to help the city out. because they wanted it so bad. This is, these are county commissioners. Deschutes County Commissioners, unanimous vote. I left the room and I talked to a lady I know, and she said, they don't do that. They don't do unanimous votes. This is very important to the county commissioners and to the county. And I think it'd be a real slap in the face to not include Mackenzie Meadow. Mackenzie Meadow is not an either-or. There's plenty of room for both. I have friends that have property in the, as you called it, A1 or whatever it is. They should be also included, but we need a variety of housing. We are willing, it's not, as Land Watch says, it's not a promise, it's a guarantee. I'll guarantee it. We're going to give teachers housing. We're going to give workforce housing. And we're going to give lots to Peter Hoover so he can continue with Habitat. That's a promise. It's not like, oh, they might do it. You can take that one to the bank. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica Tomasi.
And I too would like to thank the Steering Committee for all their hard work. As a Sisters, oh, Monica Tomasi, 527 South Burr Street, downtown. As a Sisters resident concerned about democratic processes as well as fire-wise land use planning, I ask you to support the Steering Committee's decision not to include the Mackenzie Meadows Trout Creek property and support the Planning Commission decision to support the Steering Committee's decision. While I'm sure the landowners and attorney of the Mackenzie Meadows property would like to think that recent decisions and communications from the county changes the status of the decision by the Planning Commission not to include this property, I ask you to understand why the Planning Commission decision should stand. When voting took place at the Steering Committee level, it was after many residents shared many diverse reasons for why they opposed the development of this parcel. Valid arguments were shared over many, many months in writing and in person. The reasons for the committee members voting no could have been, and I believe likely were, because of reasons having nothing to do with the county. Most notably, the increased loss of property and lives to fire if this parcel were to be developed. No official can claim that the Steering Committee or Planning Commission decisions are now moot due to anything to do with the county commission decisions or communications. To be clear, at the time the votes were tallied regarding the inclusion of the parcel, there was no individual sharing of rationale, no identification of which factor swayed each member to vote no. Much of the prior discussion and debate was on the merits of the proposal based on substantive issues about land management, community welfare, and fire risk, which have nothing to do with what county zoning decisions may or may not be or when they may or may not happen. So please be aware of any statement that speculates, assumes, or claims that the reason this parcel was rejected was solely regarding the awkward timing of the county processes in relation to city processes. The Steering Committee and Planning Commission decision was no, and as officials in a democratic society, our city council members are obligated to move forward from there on Concept AA. Otherwise, why do we have the delegation of analysis, assessment, and decision-making to the Planning Commission and the Steering Committee? To not comply with their recommendations would be to raise concerns about the trust in the judgment and the integrity of the city council members and city governance processes overall. To not move on from this parcel issue at this time would seriously dampen future citizens from considering volunteering to serve on future committees and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Walsh.
My name is Ben Walsh. I live in Portland. I grew up at 16074 Parrot Huntington Road where my mom still lives. My family moved to Sisters in 1974, and it's been a really important part of my family history, my own life, to be part of this community. And I just want to thank the Steering Committee and the Planning Commission and the city council and the community at large for what, by all accounts, has been a really exemplary process of community engagement, transparency, contribution, participation, et cetera. And I just feel compelled to share my observation that there's kind of one voice that's telling a different story about what this process has been like. And I urge the council to honor the work of the Steering Committee and the decision of the Planning Commission to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Willetts.
Bill Willetts, 68621 East Highway 20, Sisters, Oregon. I wanted to say I was struck by the 18 months. And now we are literally seven days away from becoming Priority One Land. So we have had an arduous process, but we will know for certain with a vote that was put on an emergency by the county commissioners. And I have to note that you're going to be going back to the county for this approval as well. On Monday, Peter Chikowski, Director of Deschutes Community Development, went on record suggesting, you give it a little bit of time, wait till the first, see that this vote comes in, and we're confident it will. And so, you know, after 18 months, I don't think it's too much to ask that we consider seven days. Food for thought. I also want to say, Seoul is here, and they will speak on land agreement. And we're the only game in town so far, and that is, we're going to provide them land. We have a contract with them, and they will build 12 housing units on that land for kids with developmental disabilities, kids that were raised in this community. I think that's very valid. I think that's very, very important. We are working with Peter Hoover of Habitat. We've committed 36 lots. Peter will buy those lots from us at a substantial discount, affording him the opportunity to continue to deliver homes for the next seven years in this community. Again, we're the only game in town that I'm aware of. Our school superintendent will be here tonight to speak confirming the challenges he faces keeping teachers. And he and I have discussed, and we're thinking through the opportunity of a student Hayden apprenticeship program if we're building at MMV, kids from the high school. And we can't guarantee that. We can guarantee all the aforementioned, we can't guarantee that because of union issues, but we'll work on it. Commissioner Chang went on the record confirming the challenges of urbanizing, particularly in rural residential areas with small parcels. And that's what we did. We took about half of the acreages, five-acre, seven-acre, 10-acre parcels with homes on it valued at sometimes in excess of $1 million. That is going to open a doorway for MMV, and I hope a doorway for this committee or this council. And that is that I believe there's less than 160 net acres of land in AA. After we give access for wildlife corridors and riparian zones, we'll have about 40 acres. The two of those go together in 200 acres, and 200 acres is right in the area, the 200 to 210 acres that we need. I'll close with MMV is shovel-ready. We have our infrastructure in place. We'll deliver 30% affordable housing. And, you know, I encourage you to support us and avoid the costly delays of the potential appeals that will occur. I believe we're a perfect complement for AA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen Kovitz.
Good evening, Jen Kovitz of Hayden Homes. And we respectfully request that the council amends the proposed resolution to include the Mackenzie Meadows property. I have to say, I find it fascinating that Mackenzie Meadows has been painted as the potential delaying factor of this UGB process. There is currently only one organization on the record saying that they will appeal any decision to include Mackenzie Meadows. This looming specter of appeal is a preemptive threat and a delay tactic that undermines this council's governance. It asks the city to put the risk of appeal over the well-documented growth needs of its public and private employers, its current and future residents. The threat of appeal is intended to scare Sisters decision-makers away from bold action needed to address the city's affordable housing crisis. Deschutes County Commissioners received the same threats of appeal and did not cower. The board, as you've heard, voted unanimously to rezone the property and to accept the Goal 4 exception. The commissioners have asked to prepare an emergency order, and I have to correct Mr. Kalberg, they actually said it will shave a full 104 days off of their typical process. Now is the time to listen to your superintendent of schools and your local social service providers and your incredible public committees. Now is the time to act on the potential legacy of your decisions. Because tonight you don't have an either-or decision. You have a both-and decision. Concept 8. A in the current resolution includes the inner northeast properties where Brooks and CS are already working with landowners. But further out, you have smaller parcels with restrictive CCNRs, wildlife corridors, wetland overlays. An amended resolution will allow for both the inner northeast and the Mackenzie properties to cite Sisters' long-term housing needs. When Mackenzie property owners guaranteed 30% deed-restricted affordable and workforce housing as a condition of annexation, they are committing to 60 years of affordability. That is three times the length of this UGB expansions' forward planning period, 60 years. That would create a legacy of housing affordability for more than two generations of Sisters residents. No other landowner is guaranteeing 60 years of deed-restricted affordability because no other land can deliver it. At the approved county hearing, Mackenzie property owners also voluntarily agreed to both a wildlife corridor at the northernmost point and a riparian conservation corridor along the ephemeral Trout Creek, listening to public feedback. Earlier this month, Hayden Homes was asked to join the Oregon State Fire Marshal, Sisters Fire Marshal Puller, and the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety, among others, to begin conversations about building a wildfire-prepared neighborhood pilot where fire-hardening measures would guarantee residents' access to home insurance. The state is considering locating that pilot in Sisters. On Mackenzie Meadows, we are excited to partner with the city and the state to jointly address wildfire resilience, homeowner insurance availability, and housing affordability. And if Mackenzie does go to appeal, the city has the inner northeast properties ready to annex first. Again, we are asking you not be bullied by threats of appeal and litigious delay tactics. Instead, please make a bold both-and decision. You can listen to community input and leave a legacy of long-term affordable housing. Please amend the resolution to include Mackenzie Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Huni.
Hi, I'm Julia Huni, 14537 Mountain View Loop in Crossroads. I have three adult children who grew up here in Sisters. All three of them currently live at home because you can afford to move out right now. Our middle child, Maxwell, has autism. A few years ago, he decided he wanted to get out on his own. He's 27 now. He went to Eugene because that's where the closest program was that would allow him to live independently, but with a little supervision. He has an app on his phone called Life360. Some of you might be familiar with it. You can track your family members through it. One night, we noticed he was out walking late at night because he decided to go grocery shopping. And he was two miles from home when the buses stopped running. When you're 100 miles away, there's nothing you can do about it. Fortunately, he made it home that night. We think somebody gave him a ride. We're not sure. He doesn't remember. It wasn't important to him. He's back in Sisters now, and he's living with us. He's here where we don't have to worry about him taking rides from strangers. We always knew he needs somewhere special to live, and so in 2018, I joined the Board of Seoul, which is trying to build housing for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Over the last seven years, we've talked to a lot of people about how to make our project a reality. Everyone says the same thing to us. That sounds like a really great idea. Come talk to us when you have land. Come talk to us when you have land. Earlier this year, the miracle happened, and Bill Willetts said, we have land. Mackenzie Meadow Village has pledged the land for this project that everyone we've spoken to says they want to support. The project that everyone knows that this city needs. Housing that this Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Goal 10 says that the city must plan for. There are a lot of people here tonight who will give you reasons to say no to including Mackenzie Meadow Village in the land use application for the UGB. I'm asking you to say yes. As you make your decision, I am begging you to hear what I am saying. The city needs this. We need the type of housing in Mackenzie Meadow Village, and no one else has committed to build. Housing for people who work here in Sisters, members of our community, teachers, firefighters, people like my son, Maxwell. You can give us what we need. All you need to do is say yes and include Mackenzie Meadow Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Stevens.
Good evening, councilors. Charlie Stevens, 1086 West Collier Glacier Drive here in Sisters. I will add my congratulations and my being grateful for the Steering Committee's work. It was excellent work and an excellent process, better than most any of the city processes I've participated in. I'd like to see more of that. The discussions were in-depth, they were wide-ranging, and they covered a lot of ground. The one thing I will add tonight is that contrary to what some people may believe, in accordance with some comments that I submitted earlier to the Steering Committee, there are no parcels of land that have been considered by this Steering Committee that will inherently deliver affordable housing. The housing for sale would have, in order to be affordable at the median income level in Sisters, in a household that's about $81,000 a year, would have to be half the median price of a single-family home right now in the Sisters market. And the mortgage would have to be half of that. That means that there either has to be a cash transaction or a lot of down payment in order to make these things affordable in today's economic conditions. And that's at a 3.5% interest rate. So just drawing a line around more parcels of land here is not going to bring us affordable housing. There are things that need to be discussed that have not yet been discussed here in the city that could potentially deliver that housing. But traditional development, even with Habitat involved, in today's market is not going to do that inherently. So I would refer you to my earlier comments. And again, I thank the city very much for running a great process, having great conversations. And I thank the Steering Committee for all their hard work and the time they gave up.
Thank you. Steve Hodges.
My name is Steve Hodges. I live at 710 South Maple Street, Sisters, Oregon. I've been here for 19 years. I come here in the capacity of being a schoolteacher at the high school. I'm retired now, and I still coach there, so I'm still involved with the youth of the city. And I can tell you, in my past experiences, when I first came to Sisters and got the job offer to come to Sisters, coming from the Valley, the first thing that we had to deal with was the cost of housing, just like so many other families. And there were five houses on the market when we got here that we could possibly afford. And we chose, we chose one of them, and we are still there, and we love it. We're glad that we made this move. But when my sons graduated and played for me at Sisters High School, then left, got their college degrees, and wanted to come back, you know the story. They couldn't afford it. And I've heard this over and over again from families that have called me wanting to come to Sisters, be a part of the program when I was the head coach. And I've heard this over and over again from families that have called me wanting to come to Sisters, be a part of the program when I was the head coach. And when they inquired about the home prices here, guess where they started looking next after they checked off Sisters as being affordable Redmond, which is where my son lives now. I just had a conversation with a former administrator today from Sisters High School. His daughter's moving back to the area. And her husband just got a job with the city planners of Bend. They're not even considering Sisters because of the affordability. Again, where are they looking? Redmond. So this problem has gone on for a long time, and if we don't address it now, what is it going to be like? One of my former players puts out a monthly Sisters real estate report every month. His name is Joey Morgan. And the last time I looked at his report for a medium home price in Sisters, and a lot of you probably have looked at that and are familiar with it, it was $832,000 for a medium home price in the city of Sisters. I've lost coaches. I know we've lost teachers. I know that we've lost other potential people of working wage, that were working wage families that want to come here but can't. So we have to address this in some way. And the common sense solution is if we can, if we can put aside some property for working wage families, single family housing rather than apartment buildings, I think that our city would be in better shape in the long run. And in my history of knowing Bill and Patty and Kurt, whatever they do, they're community minded folks. And I trust what they say and I know where their heart is. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Scholl.
Kurt Scholl, 69207 Tapodaro, Sisters. Also the school district superintendent, also a circle of friends mentor. Anyway, I will, I'm here for one, a lot of information. I'm in favor of supporting the end of the development with Mackenzie Meadows, really solely on the idea of affordable housing. When I moved here 10 years ago, in about year three, we recognized that we were losing staff. We make an offer, a staff member would call back or the offer, they'd call back and say, "Sorry, we tried. We can't. We looked for a week. We can't find a house we can afford to move to." So they rescind their offer and then weed back. And it's a joke amongst Central Oregon administrators that we just trade employees in Central Oregon because no, if you don't live here, it's hard to come here. The story that I would tell tying into this process, and I would back them and pause and say, "One, thank you guys all for your service. I recognize that position and understand these are tough decisions." And the story I would tell is around this year's hiring season, we actually had two administrative positions that we were hiring for. So these aren't a starting teacher salary. These are six figure salaries in the school district. And in our first brush of hiring at one of our positions, our first candidate wasn't interested. We had three viable candidates. We were lucky. And as we went to the second two, one backed out and the other one said, "I can't afford to move to Sisters." And this is, now this is a new administrator, but also on a salary that's $100,000 because of the median house income in Sisters. Now, I guess what I would say in relationship to that is we had a bunch of staff panicking. We just went through all of our viable candidates. What are we going to do? What's our backup plan? Well, we pressed pause. We reopened the position. We looked at the nature in which we applied that to, went out and did some recruiting, and we found another pool of fantastic candidates. And have a great new administrative team, two new members in our administrative team that are fantastic. And I think the moral of that is sometimes it's okay to press pause and wait and play the long game instead of the shortcut. I think we need to keep an eye on what the long term development is of the city. That's worked. Oftentimes, when we take a breath and just look at what we need long term, it'll come to us. Again, I'm in favor of the affordable housing commitment that Mackenzie Meadows has made. We've partnered with Rooted Homes. That creates a financial commitment or a land commitment on the district park, which in the financial times we're in is more difficult for us to achieve. And so anyway, in the last six years that I can come up and talk about how do we get more affordable housing, I'm there. That's why I'm here tonight. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Seraphina Smith.
Hello, my name is Seraphina Smith. I live at 135 South Pine Place. My brother Soren and I were raised in Sisters and have been surrounded with a wonderful community for about as long as I can remember. My brother has what we call an intellectual disability. And while he's very chatty and very sociable, he can't advocate for his own needs, so I'm doing it for him. He and other adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, ADD, here in Sisters, need safe, affordable, reliable places to live. And I understand that the city council is deciding today whether to remove land from the new urban growth boundary expansion that would have guaranteed a parcel to build housing for adults with ADD. If our city doesn't deliberately include housing options for people with ADD, my brother Soren and other folks with ADD will have no local options to live. Independently, and we will have to seek housing away from town and away from our fantastic community, and I know that we can do better. I urge the city to deeply consider the needs of our ADD citizens and to include land that guarantees space to build ADD appropriate housing so that our locals can stay local. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Booth.
Hello, my name is Sharon Booth. I live at 69453 Lasso in Sisters. And we've talked a lot at the many meetings about our concerns of the potential impact of MMV on the natural habitat of Trout Creek in particular and the preserve, which is a big part of that. But at this moment, I want to strongly recommend that the council approve the A dot A option recommended by the UGB Steering Committee. The committee was appointed specifically to do the hard work necessary to make these options possible. And that's really what I wanted to communicate today.
Thank you. Patty Cordoni.
Hey, Cordoni, P.O. Box 3500. I appreciate the work that you have all done and what the planning commission has done so far. It's been a long, long process and everybody knows that. I have pulled out, I'm a real estate broker here in town. I have pulled out what is available for you to see under $450,000 here in Sisters. One is a manufactured home built in 1975. And the other is a home in the 55 plus community. Neither one of these are appropriate to, of course, you know, young families with children. The lack of affordable options, especially when only two homes under $450,000 are available, and neither is ideal for working families, underscores a critical gap in the housing market. Teachers, nurses, law enforcement, and dental hygienists and the like are the backbone of any thriving community. And without attainable housing, it's difficult to attract and retain them. You've heard that. Mackenzie Meadows is offering 30%, which is 100 plus homes. Affordable and workforce housing is a significant contribution, especially if it's shovel ready. That kind of readiness paired with a clear commitment to affordability should weigh heavily in any decision about expanding the urban growth boundary. It's not just about development. It's about sustainability, equity, and ensuring that Sisters remains a livable place for the people who serve it every day. In the written conditions with the planning commission during the approval process, MMV has committed to the riparian conservation easement, which goes beyond the high water mark of the seasonal creek. It's 200 plus feet outside that creek. They have also offered, and it's written, evacuation gate, in case of fire, hopefully you'll have access through this development. The wildlife quarter is part of it, and then 30% workforce housing, inhabited housing, and then soul. I spoke with Jen today as far as the affordability part of it. They have a plan in place that makes it affordable. It's not just, they are also giving up a portion of their income in order to make this affordable. And people will be able to purchase these homes. The other thing that Phil Chang had spoken about was that MMV has a better fire rating than the grasslands in AA. So when it comes to fire and, you know, the risks that are being taken, Mackenzie Meadow is in a good position. So I would like to ask for your consideration to include MMV to the UGB. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Kurbak.
Glass change. Well, it's a hard act to follow. My name is Chris Kurbak. I represent Mackenzie Meadow Village LLC and its members. You heard from a couple of them. You have an important decision to make tonight. It could affect Sisters. It will affect Sisters for years to come. Will you allow what we perceive as process fatigue and the threat of an appeal in a separate county process get in the way of making a decision that will allow the city to ensure an adequate supply of housing for the people that live and work here for the long term? I agree with Mr. Hoover and the gentleman who's the coach. Sisters has enough expensive houses. They have enough houses on big lots, big houses. What Sisters needs, and you've heard it here from many people, housing that the teachers, police officers, social workers, city planners, the people who live and work here can afford to buy. Alternative A1 is not going to give you that. Alternative AA, I guess it is, is largely dependent on an assumption that already developed land, partially developed land, is going to somehow come together and produce enough property for a master plan that will give that affordable housing, that workforce housing, the moderately priced housing. That assumption is not valid. Studies online that I found, say, for other expansions, that available land, when it's partially developed, it's only considered available if it's of a certain size and if the land value exceeds the improvement value. I've given you detailed information. We went to the assessor's records. A lot of the parcels in AA have land values that are significantly less than the improvement values. They're not available for redevelopment at this magnitude. We have other issues with those properties. There's environmental constraints, a lot of legal constraints. AA is based on the assumption that a group of people are going to come together, assemble their properties, agree to remove restrictions that they wanted on their property originally to preserve their values, work with a developer who's willing and able to commit to 30% affordable housing in some annexation agreement in the future. That assumption again is not valid. At Mackenzie Meadow Village, you heard it. Unlike the speculation here, they are committed to doing this. I want to talk a little bit about the county process. I've been involved in it. I've championed the cause for my client. I think the county spoke loudly. They like this property. They know what this property can do for the citizens here. And they're doing everything they can to expedite it, consistent with your request in February of this year. They are going to be considering this application. And I think it's important to think about where the county is coming from on this. Certainly, there's an appeal risk. There is always an appeal risk. I just want you to know, there's an appeal risk if you exclude MMV. You've heard from the people here are passionate about what you need here and what people in this city need. There are problems with AA that are going to lead to legal challenges and appeals, just like in the process of the county. So I ask you, if you're going to face an appeal, whether you keep MMV in or out, either way, you're going to force an, or you're going to have to face an appeal. Why wouldn't you pick the properties that are best suited to meet the needs and defend that property, defend that decision? That's the thought I wanted to leave you with tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Morgan Greenwood.
Good evening, Mayor Letts. Can the council hear me okay? Thank you. My name is Morgan Greenwood. I live at 1646 West Lambert Avenue. I served on the UGB Steering Committee, and I'm here this evening to respectfully urge you to amend the resolution before you tonight to include Mackenzie Meadows Village into the city's land use application for an urban growth boundary expansion. Some of you may know that I work, my day job is with the Central Oregon Builders Association. And so to eliminate any perception of bias or conflict of interest, I want to make very clear this evening that I am speaking on behalf of myself as a Sisters resident and as a neighbor of the Mackenzie Meadows Village property. Candidly, I will just say that my job job is to advocate for land supply. This proposal provides the land supply that the development community will be satisfied with. My heart, however, is to, oh, excuse me, to advocate for housing for my community. I have a whole long thing here, but I don't have anything to say that hasn't been expressed more saliently and more poignantly by the folks that you have already heard this evening. So instead, I will really just urge you very strongly to listen to Coach Hodges when he talks about how difficult it has been for his students to come back to the community to take seriously what Superintendent Scholl has said when he talks about the challenge to recruit and retain employees within our school districts. Our school district is a gem in the region. And anything that would significantly cause any detrimental harm to our student body is a shame. Please do take that seriously. Please listen to the affected family members that have come before you tonight, who have talked about how positively impacted they would be by housing for their developmentally delayed family members. And frankly, please listen to your ownership, the property's ownership team. Mr. Kalberg indicated how unique it is to get a unanimous decision out of Deschutes County. Because of my day job, I can tell you that that is 100% the case. We have, in Commissioner Chang, perhaps the strongest environmental advocate in all of Deschutes County. He made specific requests of this ownership, ownership team to make amendments to their application in order to accommodate the environmental concerns that he had. They did that. They voluntarily did that. In addition to demonstrated environmental stewardship from this ownership team, they are also giving a gift to this community. The gift of, as we have heard from Ms. Kovitz, deed restricted housing for 60 years, 60 years. That is not present anywhere else in the county. I can say that with confidence. The likelihood that it will ever be present again is very, very, very slim. We have a gift, and council gets to determine tonight whether or not they will accept it. I strongly urge you to accept this gift. It may never be presented to us again. Thank you very much for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Therese Kolor.
Hello, Mayor Letts, City Councillors and City Staff. As Chair of the UGB Steering Committee, I am here to express appreciation to the city of Sisters for the thorough and generous nature of the UGB Steering Committee process. I am here to remind you of the extensive preparation and careful guidance provided to us all along the way by the consulting firm MIG. Andrew Parrish and Matt Hasty educated us. They listened. And they were all around excellent partners to both the UGB Steering Committee and city staff. I also would like to give kudos to Scott Woodford, who has been very helpful all on the way for the steering committee and all the people who directly contacted him, many of whom I don't know anything about, I'm sure. At every step, we drilled down to get understanding and clarity about the guidelines, our mission, considerations relative to certain areas and parcels. We strove to We strove to collect and process input from citizens and all wishing to provide public input. We were humbled by the great level of interest from the community. Please respect our public process, our conclusion, and the specific lands we recommend to you for the UGB expansion, which were subsequently approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Please move forward tonight with your council vote and approval of Resolution twenty-five fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the extent of the in-person public comment that I have. If you are on Zoom and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand.
Will you speak into the microphone? Anyway, I want to just let you know.
Can you let us, can you share your name and address, please?
Anyway, I just want to let you know that for the past umpteen years, I don't know a lot of these people, but I do know Kurt Colberg and Bill Willetts. Those guys have done more for this community than you can even realize. They've done previews, they've built immense buildings for this area. And they have invested their time and money since I've been here. I moved up from Arizona thirty-three years ago. And I started working with these guys, and they volunteered me to help build that school, elementary school over here. And they paid the wages for people who worked there, and they have, they're committed to this project that they are into. They're not going to lie to you. I have worked with Kurt. He's like my brother from another mother. And I'm going to tell you, whatever he says is how it's going to be. If he guarantees something, that's how it's going to be. Now, you may not like us because of the hats and our attitudes and the way we conduct ourselves. We may be completely opposite of what you would like to see. But I'm telling you what, I know Bill Willetts and Kurt. And what they say, you can take to the bank, just like he said. And I'm telling you, I have worked with those people for the whole time that I have been here. And they are honest, they will come through, and it doesn't matter about what anybody promises, sixty years of affordable living. They'll do it now. They're on hands, guys. I know. And you can ask Mike or any of them. Nobody's going to be. I have a work ethic that is bar none, one of the best you'll ever know. And I have worked hand in hand with all these guys, Mike, Bill, Kurt, Patty. I know they're honest, and I know they're true in what they tell you. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time, and do I need to do anything else?
Can you share your name for the record, please? This is recorded.
Sir? For the benefit of some of us who don't recognize you immediately, your name, please.
My name is Rick Deener. And my post office box is one nine zero three.
Thank you, sir.
And I've been here a long time, and I don't know all of you. I'd like to know you a little bit better, because if I'm going to live here, but affordable housing, there ain't no going to happen. It's not going to happen unless you let these guys do it. Because I can do it, I have the money, but I don't want to pay what it takes to own a home, my wife and I. I'm eighty years old. By the time I pay my mortgage, I might be pushing up daisies. So I'm telling you, take it to the bank what these guys are saying. That's all I have to say.
Sir, in other words.
From the heart.
In other words, you don't buy green bananas.
What's that?
You don't buy green bananas.
I don't what?
Buy green bananas. You might not be around to eat them with it, you're right.
All right. Thank you.
Abhi, go ahead.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Abhinth Adhary. I live at six nine zero three three Barclay Court in Sisters. I've lived here five years. I was the vice chair of the Urban Growth Boundary Steering Committee. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the Urban Growth Boundary Steering Committee. It was a mix of people who are, who have moved here in the last five years. It was a mix of people who went to Sisters High School. It's people who have lived here their whole life. And all of us were, are extremely concerned about the housing affordability crisis in Sisters. And we all want to have a solution where housing affordability is part of the plan and intentional path. Whether that's, my wife actually works at the elementary school, so like I know that it is hard for the elementary school and the school system to hire teachers. My wife actually was born in Sisters, one of the very, one of the very few people who was born literally in Sisters. And like, we're building a life here. And so we, we understand the value of housing affordability. I think the part that has been frustrating to me as a Sisters resident and a part of the Urban Growth Boundary Steering Committee is this, what I would call misinformation or misdirection that McKenzie Meadows Village is the only way of having housing affordability solved in Sisters. We have twelve hundred, like in our study, we had twelve hundred acres that was available. We picked, we spent eighteen months figuring out exactly what the right space was. And in spite of what the McKenzie Meadows Village owners and lawyer have tried to convince both the county as well as the town, there's actually quite a bit of land that's available that can be built upon to solve Sisters' housing crisis. So please do not believe that this is the only way of solving the housing crisis in Sisters. I do believe that the city council, as land is being annexed into the city, needs to help steer and ensure that we have affordable housing and workforce housing. And there's policy changes that need to be made at the city as well. But it's a false equivalence to tie it to McKenzie Meadows Village. And yes, we've heard from a lot of people in this meeting today who talked about how you can take the promises off McKenzie Meadows Village owners to the bank, et cetera. But twenty years ago, we were in almost exactly the same situation when Sisters was being expanded, McKenzie Meadows Village came in, the owners promised building senior living in that area, and that was also not built. So just because an owner, one owner promises something, doesn't mean that that's actually going to happen. With all due respect to, I know that Bill and the McKenzie Meadows owners have done a lot for Sisters, but there are financial incentives. When people are talking about, oh, like, we're going to build a hundred affordable housing units, thirty, thirty percent of the units. In terms of acreage, it's actually not thirty percent of the acreage. So there's a lot of money also in the houses that are not affordable housing, and I, and I get that, right? Like, there, I work in capitalist. We, we live in a capitalist country, and things have to be profitable and sustainable, and that's fine. But we should be transparent about motivations and the full picture of what would be built and what the other houses are going to be like. McKenzie Meadows is not the only way of solving housing crisis in Sisters. That's all. Thank you.
Right, thank you. If you're on Zoom and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. I see none.
Okay. All right, so that ends our public comments. At this point, I'm going to close the hearing. And we're going to move on to council discussion.
With your permission, I'd like to start.
Okay, would you like to wait for our councillor to return?
Yes.
Okay, we'll give her a couple of minutes and pass that out.
Fun reading in the end.
Are you going to read this, or you just want it to be? Even the retacted part?
Wiser minds prevailed there. In case you weren't impressed me or something. No, I just want to be sure you read it out loud. It's not even signed anyway, so it's not official. Yeah, here you go. Mayor Letts, fellow councillors. I've spent several hours over the last weeks considering the forwarded UGB expansion recommendation, option A, little A. And I want to be very clear that based on the information I have been presented to date, I believe the recommendation is sound. I also feel strongly that not considering the MMV property as far as final recognition was unfortunate, but understandable. At the time, option AA was forwarded to the Planning Commission and to this council, the status of the MMV rezone request to the Board of Commissioners was uncertain. However, that is no longer the case. The Board of Commissioners has voted unanimously to approve the rezone and expedite the adoption process, something we requested that they do on our letter last spring. Clarity on this issue should hopefully be provided at the October first Board of Commissioners meeting. Over the last few days, we've received letters, some in support of moving forward with option A, little A, and others asking us to defer this agenda item until after the Board of Commissioners meetings. A couple of letters, not from developers representatives, but from housing community leaders, asked us to choose wisely in making a final decision to ensure all housing needs are being met prior to our submission to the state. One thoughtful letter suggested that the options be revisited by the Steering Committee in light of the Board of Commissioners' decision. I do believe the MMV rezone may be appealed, as indicated in the letter of September twenty-third for Central Land Lunch. However, proceeding tonight with adoption's resolution could also provide an opportunity for an appeal from the MMV proponents. Neither of these potential appeals should, however, influence our determination of what is the best scenario for our UGB expansion. Rather, we must focus on what is best for all the residents of Sisters, especially for our workforce and our unhoused population. Since housing these groups is a high priority for this body, let us ensure we provide the best opportunity for this to happen by taking all factors into account. I very strongly urge that this resolution should be minimally be moved to the October eighth council meeting and ideally to the twenty-fourth or later to provide staff an opportunity to examine options and prepare information to help us determine our best course forward. Therefore, I respectfully request that this agenda item be moved to a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any, you know, questions for Scott? Clarification, maybe start there. Or obviously, if you have anything else you want to share, please, please jump in.
I just wanted to confirm something. I will look back on the Steering Committee meetings in the minutes. Despite McKenzie Meadows not being zoned yet by the board, it was shared with the UGB Steering Committee, from what I could tell in January, by a letter from MMV representation stating that we are moving forward with the request for rezoning through the county. Can you confirm that the Steering Committee was aware of that rezone happening back as far as January? Does that sound about right?
I'd have to confirm, but it sounds like it's in the ballpark.
So, so, and could you also confirm that the Steering Committee kept MMV in their analysis, in the scoring that Mig did on that property, although it was not zoned yet or approved by the Board of County Commissioners yet?
Yes, it was part of the evaluation of all the study area lands at that time.
Okay.
They encompassed the whole, the whole area.
But I will, I will say, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, because we were both on the Steering Committee, that we did, you know, it, it was something considered and talked about quite a bit throughout the process, that, that particular parcel, you know, months into it, so.
That, and that's what I was, that was the impression I had. Thank you.
I'll chime in. I was, you know, on the UGB Steering Committee as well. I think it was, MMV was considered all the way up until the last meeting and the recommendation itself. So it was, and, and honestly, I, I wanted to give them as much opportunity as possible until that last meeting, and, and the committee decided to not recommend that. That is all true.
Yeah. And then that last meeting was a extra meeting.
Yeah, we actually had an extra meeting.
We also had stretched out the process because of specifically a request of MMV, I believe, if I remember correctly. So we had extra, at least one extra meeting, and the, and the process was protracted.
We had seven meetings, is that correct? Seven official meetings, right?
And those meetings allowed for public comment testimony.
Correct, every time.
And the Planning Commission as well?
There was members of the Planning Commission too, I believe, on the committee. And you'll have to discuss about the Planning Commission itself, because I was not there for those.
Right.
Because that would have been wrong.
Yeah, there were opportunities for public comment at the Planning Commission as well.
Okay. I think about the request by McKenzie Meadows' representation to, and I think also other testimony here tonight about, we're only asking for seven days. We're only asking for seven days now. This could go on and incrementally delay. I'm not expecting someone to give me an answer right now, but I think I asked myself, well, how long does McKenzie Meadows think a delay would, how much time would be enough? And I don't know that anybody in this room knows an answer to that. So I struggle with this idea of just, it's just seven more days. I, I think it's more than seven days. It's just seven days for now. I also think about the Board of County Commissioners, their job was to focus solely on rezoning, not on the fact that homes would be built. homes would be built on this property, they were focused on rezoning. And I don't know that they're aware of any other options that the city has in terms of what was decided in terms of concept AA, I've been aware of a concept AA. So what they have before them is strictly McKenzie Meadows, and I would just make us be aware and remember that they may not have heard of any other options that we have. I do recognize our community need for affordable housing. And I've heard so strongly from testimony here tonight and in the past about needing that. Another question comes to my mind as a result of that, the McKenzie Meadows Phase One stubbed out to these fifty-eight acres that we're discussing. And so that tells me there was always an intent to develop on those properties. Why then wasn't that rezoned done earlier? It just feel like it's just put a big wrench into all of this, unfortunately. But hearing that the UGB steering committee kept MMV despite that in their analysis, including Mig's help getting through that, I I, I wanna honor the UGB steering committee decision, and I wanna honor our planning commission, because I think they're all made up of people that really took the time to go through all this information, and it was a lot of information. So at this point, I, I'm for going with the recommendation of AA by both the steering committee and the planning commission.
I would like to point out one thing about what you talked about, and that is the the county commissioners, we sent them a letter to expedite it and they've done that. And so I don't know how that plays in to this. The one thing I will say is, I think things have changed drastically since the recommendation of the steering committee. And I think that that's thrown a real wrench into this process and
Can you?
Sorry. Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm tempted to I've been working on this for seven years, so, or six, anyway. And I personally can wait a week and you know, I'd like to have a discussion about with planning staff and find out, okay, is that a real option? To have what we have and just add forty acres, then we have both? Is that too many acres? I don't know. But I would love to have those questions answered before I make a decision. I think it's fair to the McKenzie Meadow Village project. Because even though they didn't rezone at a time that was a little more expeditious, I think that they'll agree with you that they made a mistake. I don't know that for sure. I've never asked that question, I haven't had that discussion. But you're right, the intent was always to build that next property. At the same time, I totally respect these committees, I was part of that. And I hate not following recommendations, especially when they're made with such intent. And with a lot of work done. So it's not easy for me to do this at all, it's not easy at all, but I really think that things have changed since that last meeting and the recommendation. And I'm willing to wait a meeting or two. That's where I'm at.
And what, and this is for you, for you and everybody else, if we wait, what are we getting out of that waiting? You know, what, what can we gain from that, what can we learn, what can we ask?
I guess I'd have a question of Scott related to the questions that have been asked. Because I was not a part of the committee, I don't have the advantage that some of you have, having sat in those meetings. Was the discussion of MMV related to the suitability of that land if it were as priority one land? Or did it just come up, it's gonna be, has it been rezoned? Yeah, it'd be nice to discuss it, but really, we wanna move forward with the process, we don't know where that's going to go. So was there adequate discussion of whether or not that property would score well as priority one land versus the other lands that were being considered?
So I think there was recognition from the, some committee members, or maybe many of them. Based on staff and consultant presentations that we, you know, made on the, on the record that that property did score well in some of our evaluation criteria, so there, there was that knowledge on the committee and, but I'm not, I think I'm not sure that you know, I think that the, the primary factor that was least stated, you know, on the record was that the concern about the time that it was gonna take, it doesn't mean that there weren't those, some other concerns that weren't stated on the record, but that seemed to be the primary one.
And, and I want to be clear, you know, I don't want to appear like I don't appreciate the work the group done, I do, but you know, I'm not here to make the easy decision. I'm here to make the right decision, what I think is the right decision. And that's the basis of my notes, I, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this over the last week and a half, two weeks. And struggled with it. It's because like you, I, I think that we ask our committees to give us recommendations and we try very much to honor those. But sometimes the bigger picture floats in the background, and that's really where I am on this, it hasn't got to do with who owns property, what property, or suitability of property, I'm looking at when can we get the right kind of housing and how are we gonna get the right kind of housing? And so I'm really uncomfortable with eliminating an option that would fit perhaps potentially, I think the comment was and at, and and or something, it was, it could potentially fit in to this process. And I think that what I would gain by the time, I guess, would be some discussions with staff and others about what would it look like if we had to modify AA slightly in order to make this work? That's what the time buys us, it buys us not making a rush decision. And I think it also says to the county commissioners, we heard you, you listened to us, you did what we asked you to do. And so we're gonna take a few steps back and take a look at it out of respect for the work that you have done. We keep trying to figure out ways to work closely with this group of people. And we just have, I think. That's the other reason why, if this decision had been a week ago, it would have been a little easier to have this discussion, but it's gonna be a week from now. So, or two weeks, so that's why, that's the basis of my request. And I understand where you're all coming from, but you know, I, I think it's very important that we take a step back, take a deep breath for a week or two, and then move forward.
And back to my question, you know, what in this, this process, you know, can we do, you know, because you mentioned maybe having conversations with staff or something, but I don't, I don't know where we are in this process of public hearing and, you know, where we need to be having these conversations. At one point, do we start asking questions or learning things that the steering committee did not know, and therefore, or the planning commission, and therefore, it's like, oh, well maybe we need to start over again, you know, you know what I mean, I, I don't, I, I would need some clarity on this, the process of what you know, we can do ethically because of, of the rules of this public hearing, that's what I'm requesting.
My recommendation wouldn't be to do that now and at the dais, that either kick it back to the steering committee with a directive, if that was the consensus of council to reconsider fifty-eight acres. So that you can run it through the process of aligning that with our land needs and doing another, you know, concept BA or what have you.
I think it would be A dot B.
I believe the public hearing is still open, I don't know if, I don't think it was closed, as far as that part of the process. Did she close it? Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't hear the gavel. Okay. Would you agree with that, Garrett?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, first and foremost, this was an optional public hearing. It was, as I understand it, for the, the spirit of providing maximum opportunities for, for public comments and public participation. Right now, you know, no application has been filed, so we are not under the more rigid rules that would occur post filing. So certainly, more information could come to light, certainly you guys could either defer this or remand it, I mean, you, you have a lot more options now than you would should you guys, should an application be filed. You might wanna have Scott talk about the broader timeline, because I think that's probably the more salient point here is, well, how, how long can you defer, how long can, you know, when would the city need to act?
Yeah, I, I was wondering about that too, you know, what are the penalties, if any? If we don't make a decision now on the amendment. I, from what I was looking at, I was, there's no financial penalty per se from the state, but the state might knock on your door at some point and say, did you finish your twenty-year planning or not? I don't know how high Sisters is on their list of priority cities. Probably not that high. But I too have that question about, you know, what is, what would be our penalty, if anything, if, if this amendment was not done now?
Like, completely just dropped, or just putting a kind of a timeout in the process? A delay?
Yeah.
I don't think there's a penalty for, you know, for every, obviously, engaged over the last eighteen months endeavoring to get to a solution, if we had a, a, a proper reason to do so, I don't think the state's gonna penalize us for that, as long as we're continuing to move in the direction of coming up with a solution for our identified land need, if we were just let it drop for five years, then yeah, that's probably a different story. One deadline you need to be kind of aware of is the, the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven, where if we don't get the amendment adopted, we could be subject to having to redo our analyses. Could be subject to different housing rules that the state's applying. Could be subject to new population projections, so we would have, if we're not adopted by the end of twenty-six, that is a risk we run that we would have to restart some of this process.
Okay, so in a way, some of this analysis expires, in, in a sense, and has to be redone.
So I, I, somebody mentioned that and this is a curiosity for me too, I tried to watch the UGB steering committee meeting and, and had some technical difficulties with the hearing the people speak. You know, as far as doing the selection of the which parcels were coming in, and I was unclear as to and I tried to look at it on this dial interface that was also provided on the website. It was unclear as to how many you know, HOAs with restrictive guidelines were included in A dot A, or if there's any idea of how much of that I, I would expect it to be kind of outer, you know, land.
Yeah. Andrew, are you, are you available to put some of that mapping up on the screen? Or, or speak to that?
Yeah, I, sorry, I, I don't have a map available right now, but I can speak to the CCNRs as part of this, the preferred alternative here, so they, I'm not sure if you're seeing my mouse or not. But the area north of Barclay Meadow, I'm sorry, Barclay Drive. There is a CCNR that kind of affects the property next to the airport here. And then the, the land around where you see Parrot Huntington. There, that's the southern portion of a large HOA area that kind of borders Indian Ford Creek, so there are two, there are two areas there.
We can't see your screen, sorry, Andrew.
Oh, sorry about that. So the
You sharing?
Try again. Is that coming through now?
Here we go.
There we go, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So there, there are a couple of areas that have CCNRs. North of Barclay Drive and the parcels, Indian Ford Creek, kind of south and along Parrot Huntington Boulevard there. Those, those have, those have CCNRs, and those are part of HOAs, and we have some documentation about what those require, I, I think if if a UGB expansion were to occur in those areas and the and, and annexation were, were to occur for kind of urbanizing those areas. You'd probably need to address the CCNR somehow, so maybe that's a vote of property owners. Maybe that's something else, but I can't, I can't speak to that to, to a whole lot of specificity.
How many acres are we talking about, roughly?
I can do a little bit of math and get back to you on that, apologies.
Yeah, so I guess I, oh, I wanna be sure that we're not listening to one set of voices saying what they can provide and automatically leaving out voices who may not have spoken as loudly. When we talk about affordable housing and where that's really determined, there's a process, there's an annexation process, and there will be annexation criteria. And that, that will be a point where the council has to decide, you know, what do we want? When somebody comes in to the city and so, you know, nothing is solid until that is signed. So my concern with waiting is, okay, if, what, what would we take out? And now I'm, for me, it's very easy to look at, not, nothing's very easy, honestly. But, you know, looking at land that is regulated by CCNRs. A lot of those landowners are not really interested in change, at least at this point in time. And so for me, swapping out something like acreage that has all these restrictions for you know acreage that doesn't, becomes easier, whereas if we get into, you know, other core land, there's, there are some other benefits we're getting with the layout that's here, so I just wanna make sure we're not just trying to say, oh, well, that's fine, we'll do this fifty-eight acres and just it doesn't matter which land we get rid of, I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned about that at this point, because we have gone through this thorough analysis. That, you know, we, we pushed it through committees, that there have been people here tonight and can attest to the amount of time and effort that's gone through to get to this this picture here, and again, I do see some really great things about this shape and how it touches one twenty-six. I don't know, I think leaves us a lot of options. So I, I would be open to, to waiting, I think we need if we wait, I do want to come, come out very clear on what our next steps are. Sometimes we push things off and say, okay, we're gonna have staff do some more analysis, I think we need to say we want these one, two, three. Because otherwise, it just goes out into another vacuum, and we have all these priorities we're working on, this is a top, top priority. But we need to be careful of just delaying, delaying. You know, that can get to a point where nothing gets done.
So this public process that we've gone through, we've heard a lot of testimony, we've been through two committees, the steering committee and planning commission. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to go back into the public realm, we can just kind of make a hard choice ourselves if we have to. But again, you know, you talked about, a little bit about the horse trading of land, fifty-eight here, and then do you bring some out? I kind of wanna know if we can push the envelope and maybe do both somehow, and maybe we'll only have to eliminate one or two ten-acre parcels or something, I don't know, is that even, I is that even possible?
Is that even, I, is that even possible at this level? Do we have to go back to other committees, or can we? Negotiate right on the dais and just we're only talking maybe two pieces? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Cause I don't. I I'd like to know if the Steering Committee um reviewed that as an option. A combination of Mackenzie Meadows and.
Well, I I think that, yeah, and I think that's a fair question. I think that that what we came up with was. And we did come up with an either or because we weren't sure, the committee, not just me, we, them. I would say they just weren't sure if there was any timeframe that was realistic about M M V actually getting rezoned. And um somehow it did, and now it's almost happened. So I think that that's the difference between the Steering Committee and where we're at today. I think that's the biggest difference. And um. That's why I'm willing to to at least push it off for a meeting, and if we decide for ourselves that. You know what, it's too much work to go through all the stuff, and you guys, you know, if some of us pick M M V and the stuff. And some of us pick A point A, I think that's okay. I think I think we can do it right here if we wanted to, if we have the the fortitude to do that. If if not, I think it's also okay to send it back to committees and stuff. I know, I just know one thing, we don't want to put it off too much, because we do want to get the process moved, so we have affordable housing. In the next. Few years.
I I think the thing that has has troubled me in the back of my mind through the process. And and not in the na- not negative things about the committee or the work of the committee, is that. The unknown about what land, I know we have some willing landowners. We've been told they were, and I'm pretty sure I know who some of them are along the Black Butte area and that sort of thing, those, that's. Land that I'm pretty comfortable with looking at, but I know we have other land where you say there are C C Rs, there are restrictions, there are folks that have built. Expensive homes on them, and I don't have that information to know. So when I look at that area of so many acres. You know, three hundred and fourteen grows, two hundred and two net, I don't know how much of that is realistically going to be able to come into the city. At any time soon.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
Oh, but not, not, but let me finish, let me finish, let me finish, please, at any time soon. And I'm concerned, very much so, that we have developable land. Affordable housing and we have it now. Not ten years from now, not eight years from now, not seven years from now, now. And that's, that really is where I'm coming from, and without the information of knowing how much of that chunk of land. Is problematic. I'm working in the dark.
And I don't want to make an assumption that the Steering Committee didn't go through all of that same thinking.
I know, but the problem is we weren't there to go through it with.
Exactly, that's why we rely on the Steering Committee. And their recommendation. Otherwise, then we become a Steering Committee, we're gonna go through all this analysis ourselves, we're gonna try to figure it all out, and that may have all already been done.
And I, and I will, I will tell you for clarification, you know, some of the other topics brought up about the M V, M M V parcel. Um in the U G B Steering Committee, um and this was either in our discussion or public comment, you know, were concerns about. Um, you know, wildlife, you know, adjacent to the Trout Creek Conservation Area. Um egress, uh fire egress or emergency egress. Um access through the um neighborhood to the south, because there's only two narrow roads. Um that access that parcel through Mackenzie Meadows.
Mm hmm.
Um so these, these were all things that we had discussed, you know, just, just so you know, in the um. These, these were all not, it wasn't just the um. The timing and the the probability and then maybe the and the appeal of the. Uh um of a rezone, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I.
Good point.
I. Would expect that we shouldn't let go of that. Like, if if there were some path that we ended up taking that moved us forward on that land. We should not lose those concerns and find and make sure that we are. Working around them or, you know, working with them and finding answers, because. Those were not small concerns, and and it's not small concerns from our community.
Yeah, I I would, I would submit that Commissioner Chang, on behalf of that community. Who were the people that were concerned, actually addressed some of that, and it was one of the conditions of approval, that they actually created a. Uh you know, a a boundary to the west and, you know, this this setback off the creek and, you know. Is it perfect? No, some people would submit, we shouldn't build there at all. Get it, I understand that, um but I think that. Um some of the work that the Steering Committee talked about was actually completed through the rezone process with the county.
Well, the, the.
Which is, again, after the last, the last time the Steering Committee met recommended this, this eight point eight.
So the the results, the um. If the land is rezoned. The um restrictions that the uh Board of County Commissioners put on. The land are only as long as it's county land, so those get redone when they come in. It's, it's.
I don't think so, because it's rezoned as.
It's.
Residential and it it it's stuck there, whether it's county lands or whether it's city land.
No, I listened to the meeting, that's how.
Well, I mean, I'm, I don't think any of us are up here are gonna not hold them to that, they've agreed to that, but the county is part of the reason. And I was, I would assume that the master planning process would include that.
Absolutely, I'm just saying that it doesn't come with.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, and I, and I agree, and. I I I think this is all good points, and I also want to point out that I've read the documentation from the other company, this representing. Uh the properties in question up here, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of words in there that make me concerned. We're gonna build between X and X affordable housing and the and the number is seventy apart. So you're gonna build forty, or you're gonna build a hundred and twenty, I mean, I, I think that when you start seeing. And a lot of that's tied to the process of the planning, once you start doing the master plan, they're not sure how much of this they can do. And they're talking a lot of it being apartments and condos, they're not talking about being homes. And and I think that you heard from the gentleman who's a coach, that that's a big thing for a lot of people. You know, and I, and I think that there was suggestion, I mean, I I don't know, I'm, I'm, I understand that. There are some folks on the Steering Committee who I have a lot of respect for, who may be very unhappy with me right now, and that's okay. Because that's why I'm up here, I'm not afraid for you to be unhappy with me, even though you might like me, you might not. But I, it is important for me that we stay true to what we have been saying for so long. That we need affordable housing and we need it now, and I don't see that happening. As fast in Option A A, and I think there are restrictions on some of the land in Option A A. That you had a very good suggestion that we look at to see if there's some that that might be the kind of land that we should not be looking at. I think, I think a combination of the two makes the most sense, and um I think it's a great way to grow the town. And I understand there are real concerns on my part about access to egress, I. I think those are gonna have to be addressed in the planning process, and that may be involved with the state, may be involved with, can we get access on the highway twenty? Much as we had to do for woodlands, we've done access there on the highway twenty, so, you know, I think that. That those are things that we do have to address, and that the. The applicants have to address, and I'm not backing away from those things, I mean, I, but I think to take and rule a chunk of land out. That you've heard several service providers in this community say is valid and and valued by them. People who we respect and we know. Because it might be difficult for fire access, or it might be difficult for that, those are things that we need to address. But I I'm not ready to back away from my initial statement, I mean, I. I I, this is not something I thought about for five minutes before I came here today, I mulled over, I probably wrote this thing thirty times over the last several days. And so that's where I am, and I I apologize to the Steering Committee and the Planning Commission. It's not that I don't value work, it's just that I think I'm up here to do what I think is best for the city. And what is best for the residents of the city, and I believe that's where I am right now.
Can can we all agree that we do not want to go out to this, you said end of twenty six?
Okay.
Can we all agree that we don't want to redo all of our analysis with new population numbers?
Of course.
So if we look at that date and work backwards from that, that tells us how much time we have. I'm, I'm just nervous about delay, hearing delay, and I'm like, well, I really would like to know what that impact's gonna be, so let's start with that date. If we all agree, we don't want to do another round of analysis and.
And what exactly is, needs to happen by the end of twenty six?
We have to have a a an adopted uh urban growth boundary amendment, uh. Basically, uh city, county adopted, I don't think the state has to necessarily acknowledge it by then, but the, it has to be adopted locally.
And do you know how long that would take if it started from from today, if we were going forward?
Um, you know, I think we would probably want to allow six to eight months, just to be sure. You know, to have a little cushion there, so we're not running right up against the end of that.
So if we're talking about delaying and we're asking ourselves. What inform, new information are we hoping to obtain from staff help or others? Um to um help us with the decision. Um, one of the things that I would request is to see a timeline. Starting backwards from that critical date.
And I think starting backwards, not from that group, but but even before that critical date.
Yeah.
Things have the tendency to slip.
Absolutely.
Just look at me. I'm slipping the whole thing. Suggesting.
Yeah, cause I I think, you know, at least the the three of us, you know, you've been on, you you're, you're our elder statesman for sure, but. Um, you know.
Elder, I'm sorry.
We've been here, at least three of us have been here five years, and we have been working on this. And and every, and it is absolutely not lost on me, and every moment of the five years, we've been working on this, and working very hard, and working very thorough. Not one house is getting built, and I have really. Uncomfortable with with delays, because I want houses built um and hu- and housing built, so. Um. I I, one, one issue that has that's come up um in regards to the egress, and I don't know if you have an answer for this or not, but. Um, you know, it was explained to me that, you know, because of, uh you know, certain numbers of units and spacing of streets. Um, you know, for emergency vehicle access, um that this parcel would absolutely. As the M M V parcel, excuse me, would absolutely have to be required to have um an additional route, and that route would have to be. Most likely across Forest Service land and on to O dot land, and and those agencies are. Um not ones known to move quickly. And um especially now, um with massive funding cuts on on both of them, so. Um, you know, that, that's a concern, I guess one question is just to um to to clarify that also. Um, you know, is there, is there a threshold, is there a stage, is there a um, a number of units that that triggers? Um, you know, cause one, you know, one, one option I've never heard in this process, and I'm sure there's reasons for it. Um is that, you know, the the M M V parcel is, is not one parcel, it's three parcels, and. Um, you know, I've never seen um an option where maybe the north parcel's not included, and it's just the two south parcels, for instance. Um, you know, which, you know, could provide a buffer for tollgate, um if that was i- important. Um obviously reduces buildable lands to an extent, um but, but yeah, I mean, there's, you know, I'm. Um.
So I I did ask that question.
Okay.
And and it. That is possible.
Okay.
Just, I, I think I.
Yeah, it's, okay, yeah, I was never brought up to the Steering Committee.
I don't think so.
Yeah, as 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 an opportunity, so I guess what I'm trying to get at is that I personally, um. I I really don't want to delay this process anymore, I think it's, it's, it has um been delayed um at a number of junctures, however. Um. I I I do have some clarification questions, you know, I I I'm not going to turn a blind eye. Um, you know, to some of the comments and the and ideas and and the work that's been done. About the M M V parcel, so um, yeah, I feel like I could push this off, you know. A week or two, just to get some more clarification and more answers, uh so I feel like I can make a better decision, but I I don't want to go. Any farther than that.
Is that, is that possible for you folks? I mean, in terms of, you know, I I, working with the the folks at the. Consultants to determine what portion of those lands in Option A A are. More difficult, perhaps, to bring into the city as an annexation process, how many acres that accounts for? And and then look at the M M V properties and and consider egress exit and those sorts of things. Which I know are not really within your purvey necessarily, but and what it might look like if we were to bring that. Portions of it in or all of it in, I I really don't know, that's an interesting point. Um, I I think those are the things when I. Wrote, wrote my uh letter for the fifteenth or twentieth time, Judy says, how much paper are you wasting? That I was hoping to have answers to.
Um, I have a request for a five minute break. If anyone's like that, so I'm gonna call a break here and and we'll just reconvene in five minutes. I need to do that. I I love what you're trying to quieten. I was like, I have a need to silence. I was like. All right. Thank you for, uh, your patience and we're gonna resume this, uh, discussion after a little break here.
I think I'm out of points, so.
Okay.
There you go.
Where do you, um, you, you think if you'd like to wait a little?
I would, cuz I really wanna kind of talk to, I'd like to talk to staff a little bit about what our options really are. And, um, I think that I, I use dial all the time, uh, in my work. And so I can, I just love diving down into the numbers and find out what our real options are about. If we add fifty-eight acres, do we have to take away all fifty-eight over here, or can we do this and do that? And, s- I mean, I really think that we need affordable housing so bad that. I want to stretch the limits of the amount we can get without blowing up the process. Obviously, you don't want to ask for too much and the state tell you not to. But if we can push the envelope and say, hey, we're in a housing emergency. We haven't added large amounts of housing affordable wise, other than our little ten percent here and ten percent there. That we really need to just try and get as much as possible. And I think that this may be an opportunity to do that. We may come to find out that it kind of doesn't work and we just go with eight point eight. If, if I have to make that tough decision, I can do that, but I'd rather do it, A, after October first. Or whatever that deadline is that they're having with the county, and then a little time to top the staff. I would be ready to probably make a decision by October eighth, but if you want to, or whatever, the first city council meeting of the month. If you want to go two meetings, I'm okay with that too, but that's kind of where I'm at. That's, no, that is where I'm at.
Right, thank you.
Just, just want to note that, you know, technically, we, we cannot consider lands, even if the rezon gets approved and it's under appeal. We cannot officially consider its inclusion into the, uh, urban growth boundary while it's under appeal, according to DLCD. Uh, so if you want to consider inclusion of those lands, the, probably the process would be to take a timeout in the process to see how that plays out. Cuz we wouldn't be able to afford, uh, uh, a, we wouldn't be able to start with a, uh, the land use adoption process. With a property that's not, that's still under appeal, is not beneficially, uh, you know, it's not beneficially zoned, so.
But we can start the process regardless.
Which process?
Well, this, the.
Can you repeat that, Jennifer?
Yeah, just, it's, it's, yeah, it's kind of confusing, I, I, cuz I've heard a couple of different things, so I'm just trying to get it straight in my head of, of. You know, just say we want to include MMV or part of MMV or something like that, it gets appealed, um. Do we, so the, the choices are, we stop everything and wait until that's resolved. Or we move ahead, but it's with AA, or, or is there something in there where we can move ahead? And then if, if, if the solution, you know, if it resolves within that kind of time period that we're.
Um, I.
Am I making sense? Sorry.
That's a new one on me. I, I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't get if you have any opinions on that. We would be starting a land use process for something that technically could not be approved at that time.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if we can amend as it goes on, as the process goes on, but.
Yeah, I mean, we, we definitely be getting into some deep procedural issues, um, you know, I guess in my mind. You, you could, in theory, start the application. You can make amendments during the course of it. It's no simple task, um, but it's not out of the question. The record's gonna be open until you guys conclude your processes and close it. Things can obviously transpire while the record is still open. But at some point, you know, we're gonna run into the back end of the schedule that Scott's already mentioned. Um, so, you know, some overlapping timelines. Uh, so hopefully that addresses your question, but it's, it's certainly complicated.
What I hear in this, is that we can't submit a proposal with those lands in it while it's under appeal. But that doesn't mean we can't have some looks and discussions about what a proposal might look like. Should the appeal move through quickly. Hope springs eternal, a- and so, um, you know, I, 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 I guess, I hear what you're saying, but I'm trying to figure out is. Procedurally, what can or can't we do without screwing the process up? I, I don't think there's anything in the law that says we can't consider options up to a certain date.
I mean, we talked about one of your options is just to kind of pause the process to, to see how it plays out. And if it doesn't play out in the, in the manner, in the time, kind of working back that six to eight months from the end of twenty twenty-six, that's your kind of. Cut bait time and you gotta have to go forward if you want to not start some of the process over.
And in the interim, we could come up with. An option AA, an option AB. Um, or, or something like that and have them in the back burner, so when we hit that date, we know which one we're going to.
Yeah.
Move forward on.
We also have another factor to consider is how much public outreach you want to do. If, if MMV becomes, uh, priority one lands, um, you know, we've been pretty, uh, uh. Insistent on doing a good public outreach process, and when we did the, uh, open house and a lot of the outreach. Those were not, McKenzie Meadows wasn't part of that, those, wasn't, wasn't on the table, um, be- because it was, they weren't priority one lands. So it's up to council, I guess, to direct staff about how much process, how much do you want us to go back? To kind of talk to the community now that it's, now it's a priority one land. You want us to see what the community as a whole wants to, or has to say about it. So if that's, if that's true, then we need to build that in the process too.
I'll, I, I guess, I'm, the back of my mind is. That I'm here to make decisions. And, um, sometimes they're hard decisions, sometimes they're not popular decisions. Made a few in the last couple of months. Um, so, I don't know, um, public process, I, it might be interesting. But at the same point in time, I don't know if it's gonna change my mind. First, I'm just speaking, one counselor speaking, so.
So we could come back with you with kind of laying out all these options, kind of knowing, knowing kind of what the range is and.
Right, one of my options is go to a workshop, uh, once the appeal period's over. You can even, if you want to look more into the, you know, analysis of MMV, what the steering committee reviewed. Look at some of those maps, like the CCNRs and, you know, studies again, um, and then learn more about these, you know, we can develop a timeline. And kind of work back from there, uh, to kind of have these different off-ramps and on-ramps for the different concepts that could emerge to that. I would recommend, uh, earliest would be November, the schedule, something like that, um.
Yeah.
And that does put us outside of the twenty-one day appeal period after the, the county's decision too, though.
That puts us, so.
Yeah, but if they get appealed.
Right.
Uh, uh, you know, and it's the goalpost, you know, keep moving and that's, that's a frustration, I think, for everybody.
Well, keep in mind if, um, we go with AA, I, I think it has been communicated to us that there would be a potential appeal. By McKenzie Meadows' representation. And where would that put, does that put us beyond our deadline for not having to do all this work all over again? So I kind of want to see both timelines in a sense.
Do, do, um, does council feel then we hunt for a cou- a couple of weeks? Um, just get some questions answered or, or think about it and then revisit this in two weeks?
I cringe to say so, but I think yes.
And, and I apologize to all of you for bringing this up.
Gary, it's not, it's, um. It's not just you.
I, I had no grand illusions that we would make a decision tonight. I thought there was no way, and I was right, so. I mean, you know, I just didn't think we would be able to get there today. I just didn't think we would. Cuz there's just, there's stuff still on the table.
Right, I mean, you know, I could have called a vote, but I, you know, absolutely don't want to do that because I, you know, I feel like we all have some.
Keep in mind, there will always be something on the table.
Yeah.
Next week, there'll be something else on the table.
Right, right.
Decisions very fast most of the time.
Yeah.
This one's just big enough to reconsider two weeks from now.
Can we recap what we're asking staff to do?
Yeah, is there anything specific that people need from staff, or is it really just kind of having, um?
I need a one-hour meeting, that's about it.
What's that?
I just need a one-hour meeting, just ask you some que- ask some planning questions. That's what I need.
I'll do.
Yeah.
So you're talking about your own, your own information that you're gonna seek, right?
No, I just, I just want, I have questions. I, I don't know how else to put it, other.
Yeah, not a, not a.
And I don't have them all written down, they're just kind of, I have my head's going like this.
Yeah.
And, and I guess I would want to get some concept in the back of my head of what. A modified AA would look like if we included some acreage from the MMV project. So that I have some sense to of what's being, what we would lose, what we would gain, and that sort of a thing. That may be asking a lot. Um, but as I say, the disadvantage in my mind is not having been a part of the process daily. As COG, two of our councils were, I'm blind a little blind, and I apologize to those who did all the work. But I'm not comfortable making decisions till I have more information, and some of that information to me is, is what land within that concept. Realistically. Isn't going to be available for us to use and utilize for quite a long time.
Based on criteria, you mentioned.
CCRs, uh, yeah, that sort of a thing, uh, unwilling landowners and, and those things, um.
We've had a couple of letters of people that said we're not coming in.
Yeah, that's, that's right, getting at, you know, so, but I have no idea where that property is and what it looks like. And so if we could get just a little bit of help from, uh, our consultants to know exactly where we might be looking. And then how many acres that represents, so that we could, and I'm with you, I don't mind pushing that number. I, I've been saying that right. But, but, but the point is that if we can, if we could not push the number, that's probably better.
And I think that number, I fear has already been pushed. I mean, I feel like this was pushing it cuz you, you know, it was kind of. You know, um, and I mean, cuz, yeah, I was supposed to include open spaces and everything, you know, so, um. Uh, which, you know, I'm not opposed to that idea, I just, I don't want to get to the state and they throw it back in our face because we asked for too much. Do not want to get. Yeah.
You're not gonna.
Yeah, but, you know, whatever, whatever we feel, you know, our, our consultants and our staff feel, um. We can get away with and then that's gonna mean a lot to me.
Do, when we come back, do you want it to be after the appeal date has ended, or is that not important to?
Um, I, I, I think that'd be great, uh, I mean.
I was thinking the opposite way, but I don't know.
Um, so if we, say we come back in two weeks. Yeah, that's not the end of the appeal date. Yeah, no, I know, that, that's what I mean, like, so we come back in two weeks and then we still don't know, and then what are we doing?
What, what date is that?
October.
October, in, in twenty-fourth or two meetings?
Is, uh, yeah, October eighth and twenty-second, or, uh, like twenty-second is a joint, potential joint county. Board of County Commissionation meeting for a workshop at least, that's probably off. I'm looking at, Jordan, maybe, I don't know.
No, we can ask them to move that.
I was asking, what's the appeal?
Appeal date would be, it depends on when they issue the decision, after that, October first. It starts, starts once they issue the notice of decision. They say that usually probably takes place a couple of days after their, after October first. So it most likely would, would run past October twenty-second, so if you want to, if you want to be outside of the appeal date. Then November fifth would probably be the, would be the next one.
Yeah.
Appeal period is twenty-one days?
Yeah.
I mean, and I've, I've lived here long enough that I have very high confidence that Land Watch is going to appeal, just from personal experience. Living in central Oregon for decades, I, you know, um.
I can make a decision on November fifth. I can do it.
Yeah, I can.
But I wouldn't want to go another meeting past that. I think that that's enough, enough consideration.
That's all I'm asking for.
Well.
I think.
I don't know if I want to wait that long, but, um, I, I, I see what you're saying. I just, I feel like we're dragging this out. It's been years. How do you, how do you feel? Um, about that?
I feel like without that timeline that I'm hoping to see, I don't know how far out we can go. Unless we all agree to, okay, we're okay with this analysis being completely redone. And I just feel like that would be a waste of, of money that's been paid, paid so far.
That's a, yeah, we don't want to go, we don't want to miss twenty-six, that's for sure. So if November fifth, does that fit within the timeline to get that done? Okay.
This is twenties, end of twenty-six.
Yeah, but things get.
So that gives us thirteen months for a six to eight month process, you said, ish.
Yeah, once you've made us, once you made a boundary recommendation, uh, well, we can work on getting. We could, we're already starting to work on some findings, just kind of general findings, so we can kind of.
You're making a.
There's a gap between when you do the, decide on the boundary and when you get submit the applications, cuz you gotta generate all the findings that are required, but. We could probably, uh, work to reduce that timeframe.
Okay, so, um, I'm sorry.
No, you go.
I, I'm just wanting to walk through, so. We're asking for some information. And we're saying on a November fifth, we might be ready to make a decision. But I, I'm gonna walk through some steps here and just see if we're tracking. So we're wanting to know what parcels might be able to be excluded from AA. Which would be, um, a potential redrawn boundary. Um, generally, we come in ready to, you know, read off, uh, there's like a real resolution built. But if we're just starting to talk about it that night, I, I'm trying to visualize how this actually works. Um, so, uh, it, a lot of things start to sound good around nine, ten, you know. But, but, it, it starts to get blurry, um, what we've said, um. And what I don't want is that we get to November fifth and we're like, oh, wait, we, we couldn't actually do what we thought we were gonna do. Because there's a step we weren't thinking about, so I just want to stop for a second.
What an interim workshop, um, something that would be helpful.
And that, that.
To kind of lay out the options.
I, I think so.
Pretty much talk about the.
Honestly, I think that would be helpful, um, except, otherwise we're coming back and trying to make a decision in a meeting. Uh, you know, in this situation, when we haven't talked through. Exactly what it is we're making decision on. And, you know, I realize that creates a lot of work in, in general. I'm trying to think in the ways that don't create a lot of work. But I also want us to move forward in a way that makes sense and gets us there. Cause I think in my mind, this is one of our top topics. These are top goals. I mean.
Well, I think about, um, so we get this information that we're requesting, we have a workshop. Then we have to churn and we have more questions that come out of that. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a slam dunk. I think it's gonna take us down perhaps a little further down a different path. Oh, well, then maybe we need to look a little further here. So I'm just, we're becoming the steering committee. But my point is trying to avoid that. They've gone through all of this information. But we don't have to go through it all. Uh, so I just wanna be really cautious about. How much information we're looking to gather here and review and then be able to quickly make a decision from that.
We're the elected officials, we can do it. I mean. Again, it's, you know, um, sometimes we do have to make the toughest of decisions and it's not always easy. Um, when we were talking about density, it was recommended to us by the planning commission to allow four-story buildings. And we're like, no. I mean, kinda as a group, we were mostly just like, that's a big step in our direction that. Most of us didn't think that the city was ready to go through. And I, you know, I'm, I'm actually glad that we made that decision. Cause I'm glad we don't have four-story buildings in town. We appreciate the hard work of all of our committees and stuff, but sometimes, again. Circumstances change and after that last decision, this is, as big as this decision is, that's what's happened in my book. So I'm ready to gather just a little more information. Hey, I can vote A dot A if things just don't work out properly for MMV. I, I, I would hate that to a certain extent, but I, I understand. So if, you know, if we go down this next month and things are looking pretty sad. Then we can vote for that. A dot A, that's okay. It's not the end of the world, but there's still opportunity on, opportunity right now and I. Just wanna delay it and get more information. I'm done talking, I'm not gonna.
All right, so the, I, I heard talk of a, a workshop is, are you, are we thinking that's on November fifth or that's before? So that by November fifth, we can make a decision?
Sounds like it was wanting to be, you don't wanna delay it any too much past November fifth, if, if at all, so that workshop would have to occur before then.
Okay.
Maybe the eighth or.
Yeah, just wanna clarify that.
Or the twenties, I don't know, I can't do the twenty-second, cause that's, uh, already taken.
Yeah, are we? Causing a whole bunch of agenda issues?
I mean, we, you, well, we can move to joint meeting too. Maybe within twice a year, within a month or so.
Okay. We need to.
We'll look at the eighth or twenty-second and get.
I, I think from my thought process for your folks, and you in particular and, and the others in this room. That gives you more time than the eighth.
The twenty-second?
Yeah, I mean, so if, if that means we bump that joint meeting, I think this takes priority in my mind over that. And workshopping it with information that people staff have time to gather takes priority for me over that, even though I still wanna ask them about garbage service and.
This is the biggest thing. Biggest thing in.
Yep.
That I'll do in my whole city council mayor career. You told me, and I wrote the comp plan that's got this, that started this whole pro, not wrote it, but I was on the committee that wrote. And I signed it.
You know.
As mayor, and to start this process, and that was January of twenty twenty-one.
And, and I hear very clearly what you're saying there. Uh, you know, we, we've talked to talk and we haven't built a house. And I think the reason why I am so adamant that we need to consider what's happening, uh, at MMV is that. It's very clear to me based upon testimony tonight. Uh, and the documents submitted, that they're probably a year ahead of the other developers in terms of being ready to go. And I, I just, just because of pulling together the agreements, the lands, I know they're working at it and I'm never, I'm never comfortable when someone says. We have a plan, but we're not gonna tell you until you tell us you're gonna go with us. That makes me very, very uncomfortable. So, but I, I, you know, I think that we'll see how this is a year earlier. Or, or more than that, if, if we include this property or parts of this property in our discussion.
How do you feel? Is, is this pushing it to, doing, doing a workshop and? Four weeks and then?
I just stand by what I said. I just would hate to go too far.
Right.
And I don't know what's too far, how far out we can go.
I agree.
Can do it and cross our fingers.
Uh, yeah, I mean, there's, the, the, that's, the issue is, I know that, um, MMV has been a, um. Uh, you know, a, a vocal issue tonight, um, but there's a lot of other landowners over there. That are also chomping at the bit and developers and, you, you know. Um, I don't wanna be disrespectful of everybody's time. Yep, um. So, yeah, I regretfully feel like I think we, we do have just a little bit more work to do on this. Um, some more questions to answer, so. If we can, um. What I'm gonna do is, do we need a motion or just, I'm just gonna postpone this until November fifth? How do I handle this?
I would say since we went, went through the effort of making it a public hearing, why don't you set, make a motion for. When you guys are gonna resume this discussion so that the public's aware of it?
And do we want to, or can we keep the, um, written record open?
All, all options are.
And so we can, yeah, and we can still take, um, have a public hearing in November if we wanted to.
You could have a renewed public hearing, you could have no hearing, you could have the record open.
What does people feel about that to be, you know?
We're not having a, this is not a, uh, ordinance.
Yeah, it's not an app.
It's just something that we did, you know, as a.
Yeah.
We could have done everything we did tonight without having to have the public hearing.
Right.
In, including testimony from the folks and everything else. So, uh, I don't think that I have any concerns about that. I, I think that my motion would be to. Uh, continue this discussion for a decision on November the fifth, I think was the date that you mentioned. With a staff provided workshop, uh, in October and I'm gonna.
October twenty-second.
To, on October twenty-second. That would be my motion. So moved.
So not a public hearing?
And, I mean, as far as it's written record goes, I mean, uh, I mean.
Doesn't mean people came right in.
I, I read emails every day. So, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I guess it depends on whether they get attached to this or not. If we, if we're leaving it open, um, you know, we leave it open and the emails get attached to this. Or if we don't, we still get the emails and, and read them.
If they're sent to council, they get attached to it automatically, Rebecca.
I think we'll continue to put, you know, written comments and emails on the UGB website like we've been doing all along.
I, I'd like to continue hearing from the public because we're kinda moving the goal here a little bit.
Yeah.
Potentially, uh, making some difference, recommendations perhaps?
Yeah, no, uh, yeah, a lot of people, um. Were under the impression that MMV was maybe off the plate and if it's. You know, if it's continuing to bubble back up, I think. Need to give people the opportunity to react to that. Okay. All right, so we have, um.
A motion.
A motion.
Yeah, I'll second Gary's thing.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so this has been. Um, postponed. You'll be so much smarter and educated next month.
And no, we get to tackle all fun stuff, signs.
Thank you, Scott.
One of, yes, um, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. To the steering committee. Thank you to the planning commission. Thank you to everybody here who spoke.
Yes.
Um, we, we really appreciate everybody's concern and this is why we're taking this so seriously. All right, next up on council business is a signage master plan agreement and Carrie Prosser will present that to us.
So this is the consideration of an agreement with Destination by Design, uh, for the development of a signage master plan. Uh, for the city of Sisters. So, uh, we re, put out an RFP in August and received three submissions at the end of August. Um, we set up a selection review committee which consisted of myself, Jackson, Demange, Jordan Wheeler and Scott Humbert of Explore Sisters. And scoring out of that, the Destination by Design was our top pick. They are a company out of North Carolina. We had. Three, like as I said, um, RFPs and one was from Atlanta, Georgia, one was from North Carolina. And one was from Tummelo, however, they were not a, um, company that actually did the, the work that these companies do, so. Um, what we're going to do with the signage master plan is it's a coordinated signage system that will improve navigation, wayfinding for residents. Um, highlight our key attracts and attractions of public facilities, um, kind of reinforce our unique brand. And that's why we're working with Explore Sisters in that way so that we won't have the same thing. We won't be losing, using their logo, but we will be, um, working with them to make sure that we're. Coordinating what's happening across the town, um, and have consistent standards throughout. So. And we're asking that this is a framework to guide all that design placement, um, and it will be. Uh, a phased approach. So at the end of this process, we'll have phases that we can work towards and budget for to. Develop through the city. They have a very strong, um, outreach plan within their proposal, which I was very happy with. Um, and working with probably both our parks board, potentially our public works advisory board and also with the city council stakeholders and, um, also a survey. So that agreement that is for thirty thousand dollars, which was allocated in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Any questions?
No, but we're gonna ignore all the committees that you bring anyway. So no, I'm kidding. I'm joking.
I think that having been in some communities to do this, whether it's Joseph or over on the east coast in the Carolinas, Georgia. Uh, as a tourist. These signs are extremely helpful in finding your way around and also sometimes pointing you to something you didn't even know existed.
Yeah.
And, uh, you learn a little bit, so, um, I like what I see. Don't care for the linorant side, but that's beside the point. Um, so yeah, I, I think that this is a good idea and I'm glad you found somebody that you think can do the work. And in today's day in business, distance really isn't a factor.
This is gold, Jerry, gold, yeah.
Currently have wayfinding signage.
Correct.
Somewhat.
So this would replace that?
So they're doing a full audit of the whole city and all of our signage and they'll make recommendations on what they think should move forward, what can stay. Um, kind of what that whole system might look like. So they will do a complete audit of everything from ODOT signs to, um, park signs.
Will they include welcome to Sisters?
That should be, they will audit that, um, and there were some wayfinding, some gateway signs that were, um, suggested, so we may see some of those within that package as well.
I feel we really lack a welcome to Sisters sign, the one by the snow cap fell over last year, I think. And then there's one, a very weak one on the other side of town. Um, so I think.
I'm hoping for a big arch. I've talked about it before over the highway. It would be fantastic.
Just to let you know, there is work being done to replace the, um, welcome sign that was across, uh, right beside Dutch Brothers. That was, that one is one, that one has actually been worked on, um, by kids from the school district, by a couple of woodworking clubs. Um, in coordination with the city and with Jackson.
Really?
And it will actually go back into place probably in late fall in a different version. Yeah, reincarnated, yeah, for sure.
I'm, I'm for this.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion if you want me to.
Yep, that's fine, I think.
I move to approve, oh, that's the wrong one. I move to approve an agreement with Destination by Design Planning LLC for the development of a. Signage master plan in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye. All right, thank you for doing this. All right, other business response to prior meeting public comments. There is none listed here, so move on to staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did have public comments. We re, uh, addressed them a, at the last meeting too, um. The, a couple of updates here, city recorder recruitment, thank you mu- very much, Rebecca, um. Still have you for a few more weeks, but, uh, that's underway, uh, closes on October third. Um, our campus, uh, it's that time of year, um, that we'll be, uh, packing up and heading out, um. And we'll transition to first come, first served after Folk Festival. Uh, speaking of that, the, that great event starts on Friday. Um, and that, uh, this year it also includes that Sunday Free Community Event, um, as part of that package, but. Town will be popping here Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, no farmer's market, right? Because of the, uh, the crowds and. And, and stages, um, so no farmer's market this weekend. Uh, let's see, Gateway Park, um. Well, that last piece with the bus shelter, uh, I guess it's gonna be finished by the end of the week and then shipped. Um, so we'll see that delivered hopefully pretty soon and installed, uh, hopefully sometime this fall, um, we'll, we'll have that, uh. Finally, a shelter, uh, just in time for the weather. Um, you've seen a lot of construction work around town. Heard about this, you've seen the press releases and stuff, um, so, uh, we got the, the pipe crew making its way through town. It's gonna ma- um, they're gonna make it to Elm Street tomorrow, uh, they'll stay out of the way of the Sisters Folk Festival. So I, I believe work won't be happening on Friday. Um, you've seen the boring crews going, uh, big holes and, uh. On pine, um, so that's, that, that, uh, that work's continuing, um. So important work, three million dollar project for this Westside Pump Station project, um, which by the way, was, was the project that I wasn't thinking of with the URA, IGA. Because Westside Pump Station is funded by both the city and their renewal district. That's what, um, prompted that question. Thanks for staff reminding me of that of. Why we asked the attorneys about this because it's like, who's the owner when it's paid for, you know, two thirds of it from our renewal. Third of it from wastewater and, you know, um, so that, that's one of the reasons why this IGA is really helpful, cause then we don't have to worry about this double approval process. Um, next week, the Parks Advisory Board will be looking at the site plan for the proposed dog park fencing. At, uh, Gateway Park, um, so we got a little sketch there from, uh, Landscape Architect, um, pretty simple little design of, of a fence. Uh, that will go, go there with a little gate, you know, to, uh, forget what they're called, but basically so dogs don't escape and all that and. Um, you know, a little shelter, so that, that's going to board next week, um. Let's see, oh, uh, speaking of ODOT and timings for things and, you know, access and all that. Finally received the jurisdictional transfer agreement, uh, for that portion of the McKenzie Highway that, um, we've been. Yeah, yeah, so we finally got that document, uh, so we're, we're reviewing that, having legal review and then, uh. Hopefully be signing that pretty soon, uh, finally get that off our, our plates.
Which, wait, which section again? Was it, you said McKenzie Highway or the Highway twenty part?
I think it's the McKenzie portion.
Okay.
The two forty-two, yeah.
Okay, we still have the. Highway twenty to do, but that's a good start.
Speaking of Highway twenty, though, uh, work is going to be happening on the pedestrian crossing. So the infamous, well, this is like famous new crosswalk, uh, with the flashing yellows.
Front of Bymark?
Uh, yeah, uh.
They were out digging today.
Yeah, they're, they're working. They're doing concrete pouring, um, and then paving, starting in, uh, early October. Um, with then striping and stuff happening after that, so, um, yeah, exciting to finally see that happening, uh, crucial piece there. Um, and then heads up on the Cascade curb ramps, the ADA ramps, that project is moving as you've heard. Um, you know, they're, they're starting the night work, uh, the week of October sixth, fifth or sixth, um. That's required for all these ODOT projects on the highway. Uh, you can imagine if you closed a lane, uh, going through Sisters. Uh, you, we would have problems even with our alternate route, so that does require some night work. You know, I, I think the word has gotten out, cause I know people have heard about this and, uh, out of all the projects, I think that's one they're, they're aware of, um.
But since I drive Highway twenty back and forth to our home in Newport, I have seen this work in several communities along twenty. And it will be disruptive. Just expect lots.
Way out in the road.
Well, not only that, but it's, I don't know if they got different crews doing different things, but somebody have come in and dig out the old one and then there's a bunch of barricades go up. And then four weeks later, someone comes in and does something with moves the barricades around, the barricades in some cases were up for quite a while after the work was completed and that's a concern for me. So it's something we may need to stay on top of as it as it happens, um, because the barricades get into the traffic lanes.
Yeah, there there will be a lot of orange and yellow down Cascade for a while, unfortunately. Um, moving on to community development, uh, we did interviews for an associate planner position. Um, and we have made an offer uh to our preferred candidate, um, of course, you know, going through the process of background and and references and everything. But um the candidate hasn't uh accepted, so hopefully we'll be able to share that news really soon uh of a new uh planner.
Did you say they have accepted?
They have us, yeah, yes, yeah.
There's two of them, they have accepted?
Yeah, no, no, I do, I I I've been sneaking it. I didn't hear the send.
Nine twenty nine, I'm starting to slur a little bit.
No, that's not you, it's me, thank you.
And then we have uh the Northwest Park Master Plan, that is, um. You know, you had the the workshop on that recently, so we're moving forward with the consultant, um, you know, moving forward with a a concept C and engaging the community. Um, to get feedback on that concept C, um, working with the neighbors of Woodlands who. Um, uh, you know, attended that meeting and have expressed some interest in in staying involved in that project and and giving some more input, so. Um, I think we're gonna be bringing um, bringing in S P R D as well, I mean, that was something on our our future schedule. That we're trying to work in as a joint meeting with the the Parks Recreation District Board. Um, and get their in in their thoughts, especially if we're talking about a recreational facility. Um, so we'll continue to work on that, uh, building hardening, um, we're we're preparing to bring that to council. Um, probably try to do some kind of mix of a workshop with building hardening and, you know, kind of the fire resiliency next steps and and our work plan for the year. Um, but um couple that with the the code adoption um for the R three twenty seven, um, we also were targeting that for, I think, November fifth, so. Uh, um, schedule might be a little busy as usual towards the end of the year, that's kind of how things happen here. Um, and then we're still waiting for uh to hear back from D L C D on those grants that we submitted for the consultant assistance on the the housing code amendments. Um, uh, so hopefully we'll hear pretty soon, um, I think that is, yes, that's it. Happy to answer any questions, but I know it's been a late night, so.
I'm ready for bed.
Yeah. You and I attended the Cocoa meeting and I did not take very many notes, I I assume, because I wasn't feeling well, so do you remember any? Big takeaway?
I go through my Cocoa and uh no, um.
It was the legislative roundup.
It was the legislative roundup and kind of talk about the transportation package and what was happening there, waiting for a final vote, um.
Still waiting.
Still waiting.
There. Um, yeah, I'll have to follow up on it, there was a, there's another, there's a fall meeting coming up with uh. With water, I mean, so working through with uh, um. The Water Resources Department and some of those issues, and I think they're trying to schedule a meeting with either subcommittee members or something for for a meeting this fall. We also attended, I think we all, most of us attended that LLC meeting here on Friday too, which was great.
Pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody would like to go first? Garrett, what's your up to, no. You're on the spot.
Just to, I only have one thing, I'm gonna be the counselor in the in the corner uh at the hub on the. At the next farmer's market, which I think is.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure, we can, we're two weeks away with the.
I'm doing that with you.
You could be doing it.
Yeah, I'm the other person, manpower.
Thanks.
Yep.
Oh, boy.
Yep, so the counselor.
And I only have one thing.
So I'll be counselors in the corner.
Counselors in the corner. Um, uh, we had E T O uh S K E D Sisters Country Economic Development mixer uh last week.
Yeah.
And thank you, Mayor, Council President, Counselor, Governor was there. Um, it was fun, uh, Jordan was there as well, it was fun, it was kind of the. A little bit of the big hitters of Sisters in the room, you know, there's a lot, a lot of people there, uh, two of the counselors were there and it was just kind of one of those. Um, uh. One of those events that was down a couple of notches where it was like you could have a little fun, have a beer or wine or whatever and just kind of. Just talk about Sisters, how it's different and um the one stat I'll give you that the that Eric gave us was that. We have about fifty thousand square feet of space out there in industrial park, um, that's available for businesses, so. We can just get the businesses to come, we have some space, so it's not like what how it was ten years ago. Ten years ago, ten thousand was too much to ask of us, so we're building a lot out there, there's a lot of uh space available and um some of this ready to go, which is kind of nice to hear.
My understanding he's working to try to move the with the fitness club over in Reyes to move somewhere else?
I don't know what's, I don't know anything about that.
Then, and then I think there was something about that space then becoming available for some sort of a, what's it, medical use?
Yeah, I don't know, I really appreciate you guys being there, though, because I think that that's a strong, a strong signal to Ed Co in general, because uh, you know, John Stark was there as well from. Down from uh up here from Bend, and I think it's a good signal to him to know that for, and I'm not saying anything bad for not being there.
Um, I just didn't plan well, that's why I was there.
I think that was a strong showing, and I think that that kind of thing is how good relationships go, Eric's doing a great job, but. Um, it's good to see the rest of us together there just showing up, sometimes showing up is all you got to do.
And there were two county commissioners there.
Yeah, two county commissioners, I think I said that, but I didn't.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
You said counselors, yeah.
County counselors?
Which is, yeah, it's all right.
I get them mixed up all the time.
And it was a great event and that there was so many people I wanted to talk to, I didn't get to talk to.
Yeah.
You know.
I know. I had to tell a couple of people, hey, I gotta go work the room, so, you know, because I was already, you know, whatever, it was good. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, well, many of those meetings, uh, you guys were already at, so I won't get into those, but um, uh, we did do the safe parking tour in Redmond. Um, and it's quite impressive what um they have done there, or um, I think it's. Definitely there's demand there for that large of a city and uh how they've grown from the cold weather shelter, the. M at the the church and where they've, how far they've gone, uh, this is the north northwest village, is it? Am I getting the right name, Northwest Village?
Mountain View Community Development.
Uh, well, they're 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 people that put it in a place, we're Rick Russell.
Mountain View Community Development.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, yes, so, um, and then also seeing the plans for a seventy five um resident. Um, neighborhood too.
Yeah.
Um, was great, um, and then I went to the art studio tour in glory days, just to be taking advantage of this wonderful city we live in and it was so much fun.
Fun?
I loved it.
Saw you there.
Yes, saw you there, we're picking out our car, our next car, um, so I just, it just, it's nice to. Take advantage of these events to not not just be a counselor, but to be a resident too that gets to enjoy living in this wonderful city.
Cheer, cheers. Here, here.
That's all I have, thank you. Sarah, Rachel, do you have anything?
Um, well, I'll just say briefly that um Carrie and I attended the um. Oh, my gosh, my brain is pretty dead, but the um the houseless and uh regional housing committee meetings on Monday night. And. Um, really what I find myself doing at these meetings is is tracking and learning from, you know, the other communities around us that are active, which is pretty much um Bend and Redmond. Um, and just kind of watching for ways that. We might want to engage with them, I, you know, I I look to our um kind of our. Um, local Sisters partnership with the um. Groups like the Forest Service, the. Sheriff's Office, et cetera, um, for our local nonprofits to kind of let us know um what needs we have. And um I think keeping up with what other um areas are doing just uh helps give us some good examples of of what the possibilities are. So, yeah.
Wouldn't you say that they should be looking at us too, though, in a lot of ways?
Um, you know, I think that uh especially in the the. The houseless and and housing, affordable housing, they um have a population and, you know, like. Number of people and also um a financial situation that is like. Gives them more money to invest, so I just, it just, they have a lot more going on. That um I'm not saying we're not doing a good job here, but it's that they are doing things that we don't have. And so it's just learning from that and seeing what does and doesn't work.
Yeah, I like to think of the way we do things sometimes is, even though we don't have the money, I think in some ways, I feel like we're more effective in in some parts of. The situation, no?
Um, I I'm not gonna disagree with that, it's, but I I'm not gonna stop learning from what they do too.
Of course, of course, yeah.
They can read the nugget, find out what we did, right?
We can certainly be more nimble, they're smaller.
I think that's true.
Definitely, and it's. And I attended the uh Central Oregon Area Commission on Transportation meeting, just looking at the notes here, um. They're doing doing kind of a big project around um crash data analysis, but fatal crashes, um. You know, you may or may not, I've heard this from other places that, you know, especially in the last couple of years, um fatalities have kind of gone up a lot.
Yeah.
In the last two or three years, so um we kind of had a robust discussion around that of um. You know, different people around the table from the tri-county area, what are thoughts or concerns were in regards to that, so. Um, yeah, it was just good conversation, I think. There's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons um probably out there, but but they are definitely looking at that and and also there's a. Um, program out there that they're working on to do more um. Um, uh, ever um, public service announcements and things like that around that topic, so. Um, being that this is an O dot group and O dot is um tightening their belt or selling it or. Um.
Something to their belt.
Selling their pants and their belts, um. Uh, C O I C use, they used to pay C O I C to manage the meetings, um, the co-op meetings, um, they have um kind of severed that that relationship. Um, to save money, um, so watching that in action. Um, unfortunately, that means that the the meetings will now be held at O dot in Bend, because that is where they can hold the meetings instead of it more of essentially locally. Place for the tri-county area, but um, you know, that's what they kind of felt like they had to do, which is understandable, so. Um, Cocoa attended Community Builders uh through C four C, which I have, um. I've never got on that email list, so I've never been able to attend one of those, so that was a lot of fun. Um, it was at Lake Creek Lodge, so up in Camp Sherman and um just uh. Just a fun fun time to learn about what everybody's doing and uh everybody needs volunteers and. And uh then so there was a big fight at the end and, you know, Peter was there, you know.
Peter, oh, Peter started the fight, what? That's what I heard.
Yeah, I know. Uh, so that was a great event and I hope I can make more of those. Um, I think that's that's it for kind of the the big meetings, uh, obviously. I did the um safe parking tour, you know, Cocoa, other meetings, S K E D, so just just busy, busy. So many amazing things going on, a lot of people interact with, so. Um, but the most important thing we need to do is get some sleep, so uh with that, adjourn this meeting.
Okay.